Good evening. It is six o'clock. I am calling to order the July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of April.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Geek?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hurstburg?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have seven members present.
Thank you. And that takes us on to item four, Public to be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. I have two cards. So if there's anyone in the audience that wish to speak tonight, please grab a card from the back real quick and fill it out and pass it over to the PD and they'll get it passed up here. The first card I have tonight is from Travis Baker from the VFW. Got some more details for us on your Purple Heart dedication.
Madam Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Councilmembers, this has become a very big project for us. This Purple Heart Trail, I'm not going to go too much into it, kind of like last time I went a little bit more into it than I needed to. Now I've got some, now new developments. I've got the sign for the city, the sign for the cemetery, and the sign for VFW Post sixty-four sixty-one paid for by donors. So once approval is done through the city and we are told that we can proceed, I've already ordered the post's sign because it's going to be inside our building. The signage will have to be voted on or discussed, which we're going to have a meeting hopefully before I leave for Columbus, Ohio, to further advance that for the cemetery at Fairview and the city. Just want to reiterate our annual picnic's coming up, nine August. We've got a lot of things planned for it. Fortunately, I will not be able to be there. Everybody in, everybody in this room is definitely invited. Please come out. We've got a lot of good things being auctioned and/or raffled. Of course, our steak, a lot of people like our steak dinners. Our, our next one is twenty-two August. We will have, we have live entertainment. It's a combat veteran band. Just met the gentleman. He's phenomenal. He's just moved into the area, wants to get reconnected with the veterans in our community. And then twelve September, we're going to be doing a September eleventh tribute, one hundred steak dinner night. And all proceeds are going to go to help support one of our fellow sister VFWs within District Five for some troubled times that they have fallen upon at this time. And everybody will be, obviously be invited to that one as well. Live entertainment, hundred steaks. It should be a pretty good showing. So, subject to questions from any of the panel, mayor, council members, that's pretty much all I have for tonight because we're going to be discussing everything else in our, in our meetings.
Yeah.
For the Purple Heart stuff.
Right. On your picnic on the ninth, August ninth, what time?
Uh, so the picnic, we will have people onsite at eight o'clock for people to come in, our vendors, things of that nature. Doors will start getting opened around ten o'clock. Then, of course, we'll start cooking. Well, we'll be cooking overnight because we just had a five-hundred-pound hog donated. So that's going to be an all-night thing. I will on, be on the road to Ohio. So there's been plenty of food, okay? But yeah, no, probably serving around twelve, eleven-thirty to twelve-ish serving time is what we're looking at right now. And then there'll be, we got entertainment outside and a live band inside. It's going to be an all-day event, just like all of our picnics.
Okay. And then the steak dinner on the twenty-second is at five-thirty?
Uh, so that will be, start at five o'clock. So we will actually start cooking around four, four-thirty for the twenty-two August steak dinner. The live band goes on at five. He's going to play for four hours. Steak dinner is from five until sold out or five until he's done playing.
Is that twenty dollars now?
It is still fifteen dollars for the same meal. Baked potato, all the fixings, salad, green beans, dessert and dessert, dessert roll for fifteen dollars.
And the, the one on, sorry, the one on the twelfth, the hundred?
The one on twelfth, exact same price. We're not going to increase that. We just want people attending to know that the donation box will be out because this is going to benefit a post that is currently struggling within the district of, within District Five, VFW El Paso County. It's the one downtown.
What time on that one again?
Uh, same time. It'll start at five and go until complete. And like I said, it's, it's VFW Post one-on-one and it's going to be one hundred and, one hundred and one steak dinners for one-on-one.
Okay, but it's at the VFW in Fountain?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
VFW because we're trying to help them fix the rain scene and one hundred and one dinners at a place that has no air conditioning downtown Colorado Springs.
It might be a little, might be a little warm.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
All right. Any other questions, Fred? Anybody?
Uh, just the, the ninth, is that the same price too, the picnic? Is that, is that fifteen dollars?
There is no real price on the picnic. We never really charge for the picnic. Picnic is, please show up, provide support. If you want to, if you want to enter a raffle, you want to, you want to put your name down for one of the auctions, or you want to throw, you know, money in the donation box. There is no set price.
All right, thank you.
Or maybe a dunk tank. You could volunteer to be in the dunk tank.
I sure can.
I'm just kidding.
We are actually looking for dunk tank volunteers. So council members would be great dunk tank volunteers.
On the night?
Uh, the, the fire chief and the police chief would be amazing.
On the night?
Dunk tank volunteers, correct. On the night. I can't be one because I'll be in Ohio.
I could do it.
I was joking, okay? I really was. I'm not volunteering you, okay? I'm joking, okay?
I could do it.
Um, everybody's a witness. I was joking, okay? All right. I know the one rule on a dunk tank is don't cross your, your feet. Because I had some, a friend of ours crossed his feet in the dunk tank and they fell and he broke his, broke his ankles. Yeah, so don't cross your feet. All right, thank you. All right. All right, second card.
Thank you very much. It's always an honor to be able to address the council and, and Madam Mayor and police and fire and everybody. Please, please come out, please come out. I'd love to be there to, to shake your hand as you walk in, but I can't from seventeen miles away, so I apologize.
Having all the parties when you're out of town, huh? All right. The second card I have is from Steve RC.
Good evening. Thank you. As usual, I try to make sure my research is accurate. However, if I have missed anything, please, by all means, point it out to me. City council members, June twenty-fifth of last year, I came and spoke out to you regarding a lack of recognition of LGBTQ Pride Month by City of Fountain and for not speaking out against attacks made specifically against the LGBT community. I also promised that if the silence continued, I would again address this. I am disappointed I must stand here again tonight to address that same behavior. I've made a very careful review of social media sites belonging to the council and the city, and I've reviewed the minutes and videos over meetings over the last thirteen months. During that time, the city council is recognized, by my count, National Transit Week, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Colorado Crash Responder Week, Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day, Black History Month, National Police Week, and issued proclamations for recognition of Small Business Saturday, Brain Injury Awareness Month, and Women's History Month. While the city's Facebook page has notifications and postings that have included the Army Birthday, the Attack on Boulder, Distracted Drivers Awareness Month, Stormwater Awareness Month, National Work Zone Awareness Month, Arbor Day, National Get on Board Day, National Lineman Appreciation Day, National Transit Equity Day, National Dog Day, National Automotive Services Professionals Day, Mental Health Awareness Month, National Epilepsy Awareness Month, National Heroes Day, and National Hot Chocolate Day. The last mention of the LGBTQ community was the Club Shoot, Club Q shooting in two thousand and twenty-two. Now, before I go on, let me address the issue of the city council making political statements. You make them all the time, as we have just determined. As a matter of fact, I remember being here last fall discussing another political statement by referendum where your previous attorney pointed out that clearly there is nothing stating that the city or the council cannot make political statements. The question is, what statement are you going to make? Why should you rec, why should you have recognized or at least mentioned Pride Month or its events? Recognition of Pride Month was established by presidential proclamation in nineteen ninety-nine. And a lot of people have become confused as to what recognizing pride really means. So let me clarify. Pride has nothing to do with who I share a bed with or what clothes I wear or what gender I identify as. And acknowledging Pride Month doesn't mean you condone or approve of those things. So what is it about? It is about my right to exist without being persecuted. And that is what you are acknowledging when you recognize Pride Month. Because our community is absolutely under attack. Nine Republican-controlled state legislatures currently are trying to introduce resolutions to either overturn same-sex marriage or strip the LGBTQ community of their marital status. The ACLU is currently tracking five hundred and ninety-eight anti-LGBTQ bills in the U.S. at both the state and federal laws, including the most recent taking place here at a school district in Colorado. So let me be clear. When they start coming after one member of your community, we better all stand up and guard our freedoms. Keep in mind, it was within our lifetime that you, 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 and you could have been denied bank loans or credit cards because you were women. You or you may not have been able to marry the person you love if they happen to be white, and God forbid if you had children. Again, this was within our lifetimes. How are we forgetting this lesson? The time for silence is done because we know silence never supports the oppressed. It only supports the oppressor. I'm not asking you to bring Pride, Pride Parade to downtown Fountain. You could have at any time mentioned Colorado Springs Pride, Denver Pride, even Manitou Springs has Pride events, as does La Jolla, Lamar, and Pueblo. The all-American city just needs a little bit of catching up. But what you do have is three hundred and fourteen days until the next Pride Month starts. Will, the question is, is will you voice your support for our right to exist, or will you, by remaining silent, support the oppressors? I will see you in three hundred and fourteen days.
Thank you, Mr. RC. Always appreciate what you have to say. Thank you. All righty, I don't have any other cards handed in tonight. So that takes us on to presentations. First presentation is a proclamation proclaiming the month of August as Old Town Business Recognition Month, and it was read into perpetuity July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. And you don't look like Ms. Bailey.
I do not. I don't think so anyhow. My name is Nate Schull. I am the, oh, first of all, thank you, Mayor, and council, council members for allowing me to speak today. Nate Schull, City of Fountain Economic Development Specialist. We approached you last year with a request to read or recite into word a proclamation for establishing the month of August as Old Town District Business Recognition Month. The significance of this is multifold. There are a number of special anniversaries and business recognitions that occur throughout the month of August, including our very own district ambassadors who are newly appointed to this role in terms of being members of representation for the district. We have a number of important activities and events that promote business awareness throughout the district, which we would like to be able to articulate in form, which we have for you in recitation for this proclamation. And in general, we're trying to promote business services and job creation throughout the downtown. The downtown was our heart of the civic center area when it was first formed, and this is something that we take pride in. We find that we want to revitalize and find ways to bring back a little bit of a renaissance to this district. And there's a lot of businesses that are present here that have been legacy businesses for twenty-something-odd years, and there's, of course, our new attrition and new businesses that are continuing to come in. So the importance of this proclamation, we're hoping you can continue to read into perpetuity and to acknowledge that these businesses have a lot to give and that they, we can advocate for them on, on their behalf. So that is the intent here today. Whether or not you wish to recite this into law again, or into word again, is, I'm not sure how you handle that, Mayor, or?
I don't have it.
You have, you don't have?
I don't have it.
I again, gave it to Joe to pass along for the agenda.
That packet was already distributed to the council before that came through.
So in terms of action, should we just recommend for her to recite the language of the proclamation title, or should we?
There wouldn't necessarily be an action because it was read in perpetuity in two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. I wasn't entirely sure how we were going to recite this or handle it. Just acknowledgement and awareness around this importance of the, of what was recited into last year in July, and a quick acknowledgement that we are having a third annual Old Town District Recognition Month for our businesses this coming August first, which is Friday, at eight AM out here on the lawn. So we hope all council members can be present and help support our businesses for that. So.
All right, thank you. The best way we can recognize Old Town Business Week is spend some money there, right?
That's the goal.
In the Old Town business.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. The next item under presentations is a department update, Development Services Planning and Engineering, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. I'll have City Engineer Sheet start off with the presentation and then I'll have planning go at the end.
I was going to say, you don't look like Christie, so, all right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Just want to take real short time to tell you about our department, what we're doing, what's been happening, some of our accomplishments, and where we're at on some of the projects. Engineering is composed of myself, Abba Duavetti, our deputy city engineer, and Carl Spengler, our inspector. Just to mention a couple of things about them. Carl is our, the last line of defense we have out in the field to make sure things are built right. Starting off, to make sure it is designed right and all those processes are followed, Abba has been working with a consultant diligently on a pavement management or pavement warranty requirements. And I don't hesitate to say this is probably the most important criteria change we can make in engineering to ensure, to do the best we can to get our roadway infrastructure to be sustainable, last a long time, things like that. So she's, Carl and her doing a great job. We're just, we're stepping it up and we're going to make it such that our roads are better. They could construct in better, last longer, design better. So that is something really proud of our team for doing that. Next slide, please. As far as grants go, I won't get into all the details here, but three, three big grants, the four-point-six-million-dollar Link Road Project, we got that, the two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars for the Safe Streets for All, and then one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand for the ADA, ADA grant for that project that's coming up. Next slide, please. Some good news, and I think I might have touched on this before, but Indiana Roadway is complete and was under budget. Fountain Creek at Southmore, although it wasn't a project under our direction, but the city contributed six-hundred-thousand dollars for that, the City of Fountain, and everybody seems to be really pleased with it. I am myself. If you haven't had a chance to go out there, I, I recommend you do. It is quite an impressive project. The Green Tea Intersection at Carson eighty-five, that's complete. It seems to be working really, really well. I've been out there myself during, you know, busy times, and I think people are getting it. So that's, we're really proud to see that getting done or happy to see that have done. Channel repair projects, although Bob McDonald from our Transportation Department actually is heading up that effort. Two channel projects that we had to get fixed, we were given funding by the Natural Resource Conservation Service. And happy to say that the amount that our local match came in, the bids were a lot lower. So in actuality- So in actuality, we have saved money per se on getting a good contractor and good construction management folks. So save money, and that project, I think if they're not done today, they'll be done next week. So I think we're 99% there, if it's not already tied up. Let's see, CDOT approval for Link Road improvements. And just want to say, you know, we do support other departments with ADA information, or ADA design parks and transportation. So we do support other departments, not just us.
Hold on just a second, Ben. Does anybody have any questions on these accomplishments? On the channel repair, you're talking about the two, the one over off of Bandly? All that dirt they're digging out and everything, where it flooded, and then the one down by Ventana, is that what you're...
The one, yes, that Jimmy Camp and Old Pueblo.
Yeah, in the open space.
Harder to see, but it's down there, yes. The other ones have Bandly Road and Clover Ditch.
Yeah, because I think everybody sees the other one going up and down the freeway. That's so much bigger than I anticipated. Okay, thank you.
Talking about the Link project, I won't go into everything, but basically, it's a... The segment is Kane Road to Old Pueblo Road, expanding from two to three lanes with sidewalk multipurpose trail. The important thing about this project is that, and Abba's been heading this up, split it into phases. The reason we're splitting into phases, to get more done quicker. If we waited, if we treated it as a whole, just one project, it would take a lot longer. So we're breaking it up into pieces. We're gonna start constructing one year, studying, doing the right-of-way acquisition things that same year on the second segment. So the important thing there is, it's going forward, it's going well. We just have a lot of work to do, but we're gonna get it done. I think we have a great consultant, Wilson and Company, and then Abba's doing a fantastic job for that. Next slide, please. Jimmy Camp in Ohio. We hit a snag, but we're working through it. Basically, one of the owners, actually on the northwest corner, passed away. The property went into probate, so we are still negotiating with that individual. It's a tough corner to develop, if it is even at all able to be developed. But there was an appraisal done, it seemed to come in a lot higher. So we are basically, we had thought we were maybe gonna buy that parcel, expand it into the disc golf area, things like that. But the amount of money they want doesn't make sense to us, so we are gonna get exactly what we need. And that should be, that should be coming around real quick, or hopefully we can finish these negotiations quick. The Quiet Zone. And I think we've mentioned this before, but there's, you know, two more Quiet Zones. One in Indiana and then in Ohio. Traffic study's being conducted now. Abba's been working really closely with CDOT and the Federal Railroad, or Railway Administration on getting that. So what we're trying to figure out is, she's also been working really closely with CDOT. So we gotta get all those, the timing of the signals and the lights and all that thing. So right now, we're getting into, getting really into the details of what needs to be done to make those two areas a Quiet Zone. And then we'll have the Quiet Zone throughout the whole city. Next slide, please. And the last one, Safe Streets for All Action Plan. Not sure if everybody's aware of this, but what it is, Abba got a grant. And what this does is help us identify in an action plan what areas of the city have high fatality rates, crashes, things like that. So this action plan is something we do to identify those areas, identify what needs to be done. After the action plan is done, then we start submitting for grants. So then, once we get the grants, the hope is that we could take that money and actually implement some of those, you know, get those issues that we had before that we identified and we could solve them. We just gotta get the money to do it. So right now, the safety action plan is the planning effort, and after that, we go after the money so we can get the improvements done. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from any of you up here? Just to clarify, the Jimmy Camp project is the span light that we're trying to get there, the span signal, correct?
Yes, yes. It's a span wire project, but four, you know, four signals in each direction. We are doing a little widening, things like that. Setting it up for, well, to improve safety and have more time for the school buses and things like that. But overall, it fits into our whole master transportation plan. This will be signalized and expanded. These roads someday will get bigger and wider. So this is just one of those steps. Seeing into the future, we're gonna, we need them anyways, and this will definitely help right now.
Yeah, I know that's a project that we've said is very important to us as a council up here. And for the traffic flow, especially when school's back in. I was really crossing my fingers. Okay. Nothing? Okay, well, I'm just double checking.
I didn't know if there were any other questions for engineering.
Yeah, I was just double checking since your name was on the agenda, so I'm just making sure what you're doing here. Okay. Thank you, Ben, and Abba. Thank you guys for all your hard work. Appreciate that. And we're looking for it, and Kristi, we're looking, everybody's looking forward to King Supers opening next week. So you guys, you guys have worked so hard on that, and I really appreciate all the work everybody's put into that project to make that timeline come true. So thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. Thank you for acknowledging King Supers. It was one of the high priorities within the last year, year and a half, as they worked through their land use approvals, going from raw ground to a significant amount of utility and infrastructure improvements, coordination with CDOT, and then eventually groundbreaking and having the vertical construction out there, which then spurred the additional six pad sites around King Supers, which are also under construction and future phases to the east and the west. With King Supers, all of that was coming into play and online while the department was significantly short-staffed. So if there were, if the department was fully staffed, there would be four full-time equivalent employees, so essentially four full-time employees of varying levels of experience. So from an entry level all the way up to management through there. So in 2023, we were operating with one full-time equivalent and three vacancies, very similar to 2024. And then in February of '25, we onboarded a planner too to assist with some of the backlog and the plan review. So she is currently in training, getting up to speed on our regulations, how the city processes land use applications. And then we are slowly but surely getting out from underneath the backlog that was created through a significant influx of land use applications. The city was seeing a lot of interest down here as the northern El Paso County land area was essentially built out. They were looking for cheap land, cheap dirt, and quick development, so therefore they were looking south to us, which, parlaying into Utility Director Blankenship's update, previous meeting was when the city became aware of the treated water capacity limitation. So that also played into a lot of our land use applications coming online. To date, we are currently looking at 42 land use applications. Land use applications are anything from subdivisions, developments, master plans for larger developments, rezones, conditional uses, other type of applications like that. We also have 25 new commercial businesses that are either currently under review or started the construction within Fountain. So we do hear a lot on social media and in the community of chatter that we're not business-friendly. I think the numbers would tell you that that is almost half of our land use applications that are under the review are commercial-based. So it is a lot of undertaking that goes into the commercial land use applications to make sure that they are developed in a timely and consistent manner through the development, make sure all the infrastructure is in place, and that it will serve the greater community as a whole and not be a hindrance in the long run. We've also looked at 88 miscellaneous plans. These tend to be homeowner-driven applications, so basement finishes, decks, sheds, garages, some of those smaller private land improvements on private properties. We've also reviewed and approved 53 new single-family home construction plans, primarily within the Aspen Ranch Development, which is at the northeast corner of Link and Kane, and then some in the Ventana Development at Old Pueblo and R and B Court. We've also processed three municipal code amendments. Primarily, these were state-mandated amendments, and we still have more coming through that we need to have completed and updated our municipal code by the end of the year. So while we are doing that with about half staffing, maybe even less, we are quickly moving through as many amendments, as many reviews, many land use applications as the two of us can handle in any given day.
A second. We do have a question on this slide.
Sure.
Councilmember Rick.
Kristi, we, you, I, Scott, Shawna, several others, met with Pike's Peak Regional Building Authority, and we identified a software access that you didn't have so that you couldn't scan plots in and send them to Pike's Peak Regional. They were said they were gonna go work on that. Did that ever get resolved?
Yes, it has. So we've cut down on a lot of that lag time of having applicants, primarily the homeowner-driven ones, those 88 miscellaneous plans, submit those back to Regional Building to upload those. Now, we get those turned around and uploaded. If they don't, within 24 hours.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
And to put all of those land use applications permitting and commercial operations into perspective, this is a development forecast map that's been updated through this month. So kind of in the upper right-hand corner is a subsect of the South Academy Highlands, which is up at Academy and Venetucci. We've got the Town Place Suite Hotel adjacent to the Holiday Inn, coming under, or is under construction and looking to come online later this year. And then on the west side of Venetucci, we've got two pad sites that are currently under the land use review process, which would be for a multi-tenant building, which would house three to four tenants, and then a Valvoline Oil Change that will be the last pad site infill in that area of the first phase of South Academy. There is still Phase Two of South Academy Highlands, which would be to the north of the Sam's Club on the west or east side of Venetucci that is slated for future development. At that time, at this time, we don't have any current land users for that, but they are working closely with Economic Development, FIRA, and the landowners to bring something to that area. Along Highway 85, we still have the Riverbend Commercial Development at Main Street and 85, so North Main Street, not the one closest to City Hall. They have been on and off the radar through the years as the economy fluctuates. They come on, come off, depending on that. But that is slated for future commercial development. We have additional multifamily units along Southmore and Fontaine. That is slated for additional multifamily in that area, which is a much-needed need in the area for apartments that we don't have that type of a housing product in that area. They're currently going through the land use. In the King Supers Shopping Center, right along Mesa Ridge and Syracuse, in the pop-out that's kind of in the middle of the screen, it does identify the various commercial pad sites that are coming online. Not only in addition to the King Supers and the associated fuel site, there are four inline tenants that are connected to the commercial or the King Super Shopping Center, which have two restaurants, a dental office, and a haircut barber type of a business located in there, along with the pad sites that flank the Syracuse and Mesa Ridge frontage. We've got Whataburger, which is a 24-hour quick-service restaurant. And Credit Union is looking to Occupy a freestanding building as they've outgrown their space within the Safeway Shopping Center to the east, along with a Chipotle is looking at there, in addition to Autozone and a Valvoline Oil Change. There is still one remaining pad site there that there has not been a tenant slated for. Along the west side of Syracuse, there's more additional commercial development. If you go out there today or have driven by, the Christian Brothers Automotive is currently under construction, so that is that wooden structure with the four or five bays that is coming online. And then to the west of that, there is additional acreage there that is also slated for additional commercial development. To the east of King Supers is what we've called a future Phase Two for commercial development in this area. And the city is working with the land developer on that for potential sites through that. They have not made a formal application, though, for that. But we do anticipate that the commercial development that's occurring in this area will spur additional interest along this corridor, that we will see additional requests coming through the pipeline quickly. I am not gonna go through all of these, but these are some of those big, higher areas. In recent years, in the Old Town and 85 Gateway District, we've seen Domino's open recently over off of Royalty Place, in addition to Sliced Bagel Downtown and Honey Tea and Me, I believe is the actual business name, right across the street here from City Hall to Occupy additional commercial space in the downtown area. And then we also have the Mesa Ridge area that is looking to develop additional multifamily units near Legend Oak and CNS to the east of that, to the east of the Hale Reservoir within the Cross Creek Park area. The residential developments that we do have in the pipeline, not only the Mesa Ridge Apartments, but the Corvallis Development along Fontaine and Mark Shuffle, are all served by the Whitefield Water and Sanitation District. So they are not impacted by the City of Fountain's treated water capacity, but they did receive approvals through that water district. And the Whitefield Water and Sanitation District has indicated that they have sufficient capacity to serve those future developments at those densities that have come through. So nothing is coming as a shock to these districts. We're working very closely with the Security Water District and Whitefield Water to ensure that anybody that does approach the city has had very upfront and honest conversations with those water providers to ensure that we are not setting anybody up to fail. And they have all infrastructures on and go to turn a faucet on, and they don't have any water. So they are working very quickly and very closely with those districts that anything that starts our process has already had those water approvals granted through the appropriate district. The map does have various color-coded developments on there to indicate several phases, whether they're under construction currently, in the short term, one to three years, three to four years, or six-plus years, depending on where they're at in the process, if there's water availability, if they're looking for other resources for water. There's various variables that impact each individual development within the city. Are there any questions on the development map in general? Okay. So this really does kind of give a visual to the previous slide of the amount of commercial and land use applications that we are currently reviewing. We are busy, and we don't anticipate that slowing down in the near term, but we are working through that as we get our staffing up to fully trained and ready to hit the ground running. Are there any questions from myself?
Any questions from any council members up here? Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's always good to get those updates and see what's going on, the real things that are coming, not just the social media rumors, right? Alrighty. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rick, repairs on Highway 8587. Are you going down there or staying up here?
I'm staying up here.
Okay.
So at our last council meeting, member of the public brought up Highway 85, specifically between Willow Springs and Main Street, all the way up north by Security. That area's had a lot of weeds, a lot of potholes, a lot of issues. So I've been working on that, and I wanted to provide an update to the public. Next slide, please. We've put in over 20 work orders last month with CDOT to try and get them to come out and improve that area. In addition, we've asked for assistance from Senator Snyder and Representative Bradfield to work with CDOT to get some things done. We did get quotes to have the median and right-of-ways mowed and trimmed. We've worked with CDOT for over a year to try and get permission from them to try and have us or a contractor maintain the weeds and the grass in that area because it is so unsightly, and we have pursued funding for mowing and trimming in that area. Next slide, please. We have had some success in this area, and I'll just show you a couple slides. The left is a before, where we've got a big pothole, and on the right, you can see they have come out and they have filled the pothole. Next slide, please. Long, long cracks in the highway here, and those, a lot of those cracks have been filled. Now, in addition to that, we've had a contractor come out, cut down all the weeds in the medium, and start trimming along the sides of the highway. Is every pothole filled in? Is every piece of grass cut? Every weed gone? No, it's not. But we have seen significant improvements in this area based off what I've seen and the feedback I've got from the public. And we are going to continue to work on this issue. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. I want to special thanks out to Senator Mark Snyder, Representative Mary Bradfield, Senator Snyder's senior aide, Kristi Moran, Deputy City Manager Todd Evans, and City Inspector Carl Spengler. All these people have worked very hard to try and improve this area. As I said, we have made progress. Is it perfect? No, but we're going to continue to work on it. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for doing that, because it takes all of us, everybody being a squeaky wheel on this area, to get it going, and I really appreciate you helping with that. So, it's a lot of work. So, and if anybody else wants to put a work order in on that state highway, CDOT does have a reporting site, very similar to the app we have, that you can go to their website and report it. So, all right, that takes us on to item five point two, Board Commissions and Committee Reports. There are none. Item six, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. Mr. Trainer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Ooh. Nothing from Scott. Wow.
I'm trying to get a citizen signed up online. Something's not working right now.
Okay. We could just go down the row?
Nothing from the City Attorney's Office.
Nothing more tonight, thank you. I don't have anything tonight.
No, ma'am. Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Wow. Okay.
Nothing from my office either.
IT?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay. I'll start to my right tonight. Councilmember Duncan.
Thank you. This has nothing to do with the City of Fountain, but I just want to say that I have accepted an appointment to the Health Equity Commission at the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, and this commission serves as an advisor to the Department of Health on health equality issues, issues specifically focusing on alignment, education, and capacity building for state and local health programs and community-based programs, and a little bit about the Office of Health and Equality. In two thousand and seven, Senate Bill zero-seven-two-forty-two established the Office of Health Equality, O-H-E, and the Health Equality Commission. In two thousand and thirteen, House Bill thirteen-ten-eighty-eight renamed the Office, and the Office of Health and Environment focuses on advocacy for equality and strength-based approaches for prioritizing populations, aging populations, Black, Indigenous, and people of color, LGBTQIA, people living with disabilities, people living with low socioeconomic status, and people living in rural or remote areas. And this was of, of interest to me because I have a master's in public health, and I am teaching rural public health, and that's all I have.
Well, congratulations. Councilmember Hrisberg.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to all of our service members and veterans who are currently participating in the Wounded War Games currently going on in Colorado Springs. They compete in adaptive sports, and it's really inspirational to see these athletes do what they do. So, I just want to give a big shout out to all those service members and veterans.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I just have a quick statement to read. Good evening, esteemed colleagues, dedicated city staff, and cherished community members, and dear friends. It is with mixed and profound gratitude and touch of bittersweet emotions that I sit before you tonight, not as your representative for much longer, but as a fellow resident reflecting on my incredible journey. After serving the city council for three and a half years, my term will come to an end. I will not be seeking a second term. I want to express my sincere gratitude to everyone. When I first joined this council, I did so with a clear vision for our city, a genuine desire to contribute to its growth, and a strong commitment to serving the people who call this place home. What I found was not just a role, but a true calling and a community that embraces, embraced me with open arms. We have faced challenges together and celebrated success. We debated, we discussed, and sometimes disagreed, but always with the shared goal of making Fountain a better place for everyone. I'm incredibly proud of what we have accomplished during my tenure, the revaluation of the Old Town District, including our wayfinding placement signs who to come in, the expansion of our public parks and green space, the implementation of sustainable energy initiatives, and improve our public safety to include passing two bill, two B, and then strengthening our local community by attracting new businesses like King Supers, opening in other businesses that will come to follow in the future, investing in our schools and educational programs, enhancing transparency and community engagement in our city affairs. These achievements were not mine alone. They were the result of countless hours of hard work and collaboration, the dedication from our fellow councilmembers, and tireless efforts of our city manager, and every department head, and the unwavering commitment for our, for our city. Staff who are truly the backbone of our operation, to them, I extend a sincere appreciation. Your professionalism and expertise and passion are what makes the city run. And the residents of Fountain, thank you. Thank you for your trust and feedback, participation, and patience. Your voices have been my guide, and your passion for our community has been my constant motivation. It has been an honor to listen to your concerns, advocate for your needs, and work towards a future that reflects our shared aspirations. Although my time on the council may be coming to an end, my commitment to Fountain will never waver. I will continue to be active and engaged member of this community, supporting its progress and cheering on its future success. I have immersed, I have immense faith in the future of Fountain and the leadership that will continue to guide it. I urge you all to remain engaged and continue holding your elected officials accountable and to work together constantly with the common good. I want you to know that I'm going to work all the way until the end of my term. I'm going to give you a hundred percent. I want you to know that you have an awesome council. You have an awesome staff that works really hard. I promised my wife that I would only do one term, and I gotta, I gotta keep my promise. And so, this job is not easy. Serving's not easy. I spend as much time at this that I do at my regular job, you know, researching, studying, and all these different things. So, those who, who wish to run, please do so and come with an open mind. That is, it's hard. It's hard to serve, and it's hard sometimes to not always get a thank you, and that's okay. I got big shoulders, and I'm okay with that. And we'll keep people that disagree. That's fine. As long as we work for the common, our common goal is to work together. And so, I appreciate everybody, Scott, all the way down. I can name, I can't name everybody, but everybody that really works hard for this, they give all they, they give all they got. And I've seen it personally, and I appreciate you all, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Don't think you're getting out of here that easy.
No.
Ah.
November, I'm gone.
No, yeah, I mean, I mean, in terms of nobody's prepared to say anything tonight. So, thank you. That was an excellent statement. Thank you, and a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you. Councilmember Rick, beat that.
I'm not even going to try. I do want to recognize and thank our city engineer, Ben Sheets. Ran into an issue this week, or excuse me, last week, to where an individual had his cable box and his internet box destroyed by a contractor that was working for the Fountain Sanitation District, needed some help. Ben was able to quickly track it down and get Fountain Sanitation District on to repairing that, so I want to thank him personally for, for helping me out, help a resident of Fountain out who was in, in trouble, and I do appreciate that. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Geek. Councilmember Estes.
I'm going to jump in. Fountain Valley Senior Center, they were here last time. We honored them for their fifty years of service to our community, and I just want to bring, again, attention to the vital role that they play in this community and their need of funds to continue to serve this community. Our biggest department there is our transportation, and transportation funding has been cut significantly. We hit a, had a ten percent cut last year, and we're still up in the air on what we're going to get cut this year. And this is, we've heard that it's not from the feds, some of it's from the state. So, if you have anybody in the community that is using that transportation service or visiting the Senior Center and participating in the wonderful programming there, please remember them in your donation efforts and try to get, help out our seniors in this community, because it is a vital part of this community. The other thing is August first is Colorado Day. It will be the one-hundred-and-forty-ninth birthday of our state on August first. So, take the time to celebrate our wonderful state and everything that's coming up, and plan for a really great celebration next year on, on our one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary.
Thank you. I attended some meetings, Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, always an adventure with what goes on there. I would like to state, thank the Thunder in the Valley Group for putting on another fantastic event. I know I saw Councilmember Hinton there, and, and Councilmember Geek was there. I'm not sure if anybody else had a chance to, to stop by. It was a great event, but boy, it was nice to have it be a little bit cooler this year, and at least until about eleven o'clock when the clouds broke. But that was nice to get out in the morning and, and have it be a little bit cooler. I don't know who won our trophies, so if we could find out maybe who won our trophies and the cars, that would be fun. The Community Services Group meets once a month, and I go to that meeting, and I met a fantastic group that is opening down in Fountain, up, right outside Fountain and by the Venetucci Farm Area. The Colorado Outdoor Youth Association is starting classes down here with archery and different things, and they're just getting established, and I'm super excited about everything they offer and the amount of scholarships that they offer. They work with kids eight through eighteen, but the whole thing is to get them outdoors. So, we're trying to set up a meeting with myself, Gordy, and Scott and see if there's any way we can partner with them on anything, because I am just super excited about them, them being down here and the opportunities that they, they present. But I did invite, his name is Martin, I invited him to sign up with Joni to come give the entire council presentation, so we can all learn about what they're doing in our area and share it with the, share it with the community. I just wanted to touch base about the mess with the school over here. I understand that's not our city project. It's a Fountain sanitation project. We have any idea when that'll be wrapped up, because I know it's not our project, but do we have any idea what's going on with that? I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be done before the kids come back to school.
That's my understanding, is that they are working closely with School District Aid to have that fully completed and open for school starts here in a couple weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Any questions about that? Fountain sanitation would be the right one to answer. We don't, yeah, we don't know exactly, because they've been having problems. Some of those pipes are thirty feet deep, and the soils are very sandy, so it's been collapsing on them. They actually had to order special boxes to hold back the soils there, so it's been, it's been a real challenge for Fountain sanitation as well.
Okay. All righty. That street has been blocked off for a really, really long time, and it's tough enough when school's not in session. I can't imagine what it's going to be like if they're not done before that, so we'll just all cross our fingers. All righty. Thank you very much. And that's all I have tonight. And that takes us on to the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilmember or citizen so requests, in which case, the item may be removed from Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. I have Items seven A and B, Approval of the Minutes, and Resolution twenty-five-zero-two-six for, for the IGSA. So, what would a council like to do with that?
Councilmember Estes.
Move to approve Consent Calendar.
Councilmember Hinton.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the Consent Agenda. Do we have any deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
Thank you. That takes us on to Item eight, Old Business. Item eight A, Resolution twenty-five dash zero-two-seven, Adoption of the City's Wayfinding System Signage Plan per D fifteen slash BD four Strategic Plan Objective. Ms. Bailey, Nate Scholl, and MBI Consultant.
Once again, hello. Nate Scholl, City of Fountain Economic Development Specialist. Kimberly Bailey will also be speaking tonight. She's our Economic Development Director. I am pleased to be able to share with you tonight what is our final wayfinding signage system master plan. This has been an ongoing effort for the last year and a half, so we thank you so much, councilmembers, for your patience in the process, but we are finally at the conclusion of our plan and the request for tonight to be the adoption of said plan. Again, we're very excited to be able to share with you the results of this. Let me move on to the next slide to share with you what we'll talk about. So, the ask of you tonight towards the end is that the request is for the Resolution twenty-five XX, we will find out the number, requesting formal adoption of this wayfinding signage system master plan per the Strategic Objective D fifteen, which was charged by council in their twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four city council, city strategic plan update, excuse me, and thereby requesting for the development and publication of a wayfinding signage plan. So, that is the request tonight. We're going to run through this agenda with you, hopefully briefly. First of which, I will be presenting on the plan goals and metrics, which is a quick recap. We have touched base on that before, but just to give you some grounding for this adoption. And then, the comprehensive signage family set, we're going to walk through that with you briefly again. At that point, Kimberly will take over and talk through signage infrastructure prioritization rankings, how we intend to lay out the signage in the field per the, what is to be a ten-year strategic plan timeline. We'll also include cost estimates for that, referencing certain economic benefits and return on investments for the, for signage overall, community signage. And then, lastly, explain what it will be part of the package of deliverables, which includes five supplemental materials that were complimentary part of, I should say, part of the package under our consultant. Next slide. So, a quick recap here. We are, we, as in staff and Strategic Steering Committee, helped develop the following goals per the RFP that was issued for our consultant. Top goals that came out of this, in the RFP, were supporting business, the importance of being able to identify the use of signage to attract both visitors to businesses, but also new businesses to invest in the community, so increasing their awareness of these districts and the presence of the businesses within the districts. Also, an important point would be to clarify points of entry, so making sure that there's an actual cognizant awareness of when you enter the city at certain geographic points and where you are once you're within those districts. It has, we discovered through the analysis that there are a lot of folks who don't really know where Fountain begins or ends, or even that they're in a specific area, geographic business district area. So, clarifying those points of entry and arrival sequence and how you get to your destination is very important. And then, lastly, improving upon navigability, so that's the general premise of signage overall, is getting you from A to B. But of course, the emphasis here is on public safety, so using navigability as a tool for improving public safety for users of the roadways. Next slide, please. So, here, we, we did a Phase One and Phase Two public outreach effort, and in this, we collected over one thousand different responses. Again, this is over the course of about a year's time. We collected those sources from public surveys online, but also anecdotal responses, people who we had one-on-one conversations with, and then, ultimately, during our second phase, the responses back on the two top design idea concepts that were presented, so about six hundred responses to those. In that, we just summarized here the, probably the most important response that we felt symbolized what we want to accomplish within this plan are the goals set up forth here on the top left. First is, the signs should be legible, thereby meaning that they should be easy to digest the information that's on the sign for everybody who is going fifty miles an hour, forty-five, hopefully, on the forty-five mile-per-hour speed limit, or anybody who's walking. Anybody should be able to view the signs' information that it's sharing. Being cost-effective is another important second, secondary element, so making sure that it doesn't put a strain on the city's resources, being able to, you know, be budget-friendly in terms of the actual signage designs, that was very important. Third is the easy to maintain, that would be the durability of the materials that we chose, that would, that would be chosen for signage, and then, the actual ongoing maintenance and ease of maintenance obligations. So, we're trying to reduce that burden on staff to be able to maintain those signs that are in the field. And then, lastly, although it is fourth, but it's still very important, being creative, so being visually striking or appealing for folks who are driving visitors, residents, anybody who would be attracted to these signs. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So here's a original suite of signage family set, which is the concepts in silhouettes on the left. This is kind of the original ideas that came about through the analysis and thought process by staff and feedback from the public. And the focus for us moving forward in this design was really on four concept types. One would be the gateway, or what we're calling now district boundary signs. So those are those points of entry, when you lead into a district, you'll see those. Auto or vehicular signs, of course, those are predominant signs in your suite of signs. And then third and fourth are park signs and pedestrian signs. While the others are important, they were tertiary or even further down the list, but they still have significance for us as a community in how we interpret and move through our geography. Next slide, please. Just a quick recap here from the public feedback. Some of the concepts in terms of symbology that were derived from, of interest by the public responses were the five-star concept that was put into the design. So this is supposed to exemplify things like our All-American City logo, of course, that has the five stars, our five military bases, and then what is considered five commercial districts in our area. And then the concept of an actual icon or water fountain, if you will, that was both literal but also interpretive. So there were, the idea of taking certain elements of a fountain, such as the curves or the motion, and creating a little bit of accent and emphasis on the signage design within that. So those were two very important symbology elements. Next slide, please. So I'll kind of rush, oh, rush. I will briefly talk through some of these because you've already heard this from our last presentation. But our top signs, as mentioned, one is the vehicular signage or directional signage. Here you have a suite of signs that are in range of cost and based on the, based on the emphasis of certain design elements within them. So from left to right, you have most costly to least costly. This is also intended to represent the compatibility based on the speed of roadway classification. So 45 mile per hour roads, which I don't show the sign here, I'm just showing you the 25, for instance. The 45 mile per hour are around 24 feet high. These being the 25 mile per hour are a little smaller. And even on the right, you have reduced size for the more intimate districts like the Old Town where there'll be slower speeds at 15 miles per hour. So elements that are focusing on in the design here, the base, which has a sturdy base either through corrugated sheet metal or a special design, as mentioned, in some of those symbology elements that we just talked about. Or we could go with the more demure, less costly option on the right, which is just your basic pole. All of these options will be, include a significant, a signified banner which shows the district that you're in. So the example used here would be the Old Town District. And then, of course, the destinations on the signs themselves. So, next slide. There is an emphasis in our plan on making sure there's an awareness around color because color, in a sense, is a strategy for navigation and identity within an area, so it's almost a branding technique or tactic. The palettes that we chose here are intended to aid awareness around that city navigation. The emphasis of the colors are that they are 1 ADA compliant, so any text above should meet certain ADA visibility, compliance measure, excuse me, technologically, I use the word technologically, visibly important and ADA compliant backgrounds. So for instance, the white of the font will be visible to anybody who is impaired against some of these color choices of the background. The green here on the right is just a standard Parks and Recreation green, which we wanted to continue to use of through our park uniform design. Next slide, please. These are secondary, these are called the district boundary signs. So on your left, you have two potential options for those designs, of which are your base poles or pillars, and then we have more of an artistic flair option, which is something that would really be emphasis around the entryways to your district. So the placement of these signs is at the boundaries between district entries. Again, the one on the left being the more prominent, perhaps more costly option, but the one on the left, sorry, the second to the left would be secondary in terms of cost. And then pairing that with any one of those artistic pillars at those locations. Next slide, please. Third on the list is Parks and Trail signage. So this type of signage would be placed at strategic points of importance throughout the trail networks and at parks themselves. And they're intended to, of course, help highlight amenities such as the trailheads, any scenic areas, and guide passerby's through that network. On the left is what we call the smaller bollard signs, and these would be more frequently placed throughout the park systems, particularly along mile markers or area markers on trails to get folks to continue along their path. And then on the right side is where you'd find what are directional signs, more focused on intersections of junctures, right, between different trails or leading into a number of cluster of parks that are in an area. And as you can see, either one of those would be accessible to folks at different user abilities. Next slide. And then pedestrians, of course, are a big emphasis for our signage, a little less so, but the, in terms of the quantity of signs, we won't have as many of these signs throughout the districts. You'll find these in walkable districts in particular, for instance, Old Town area or in some of those shopping areas in Mesa Ridge. But being focusing on, again, multiple users, there is an example here of a QR code, which would be also used on the park signage. You would be able to take a quick photo, and that's where you'd pick up the map for the district that you're in. So it could reference a park itself and/or the district and show you amenities surrounding that. Next slide. And the next category is interstate gateway signs. These are your main feature signs along the highways. Two designs that have come up in the concepts through public survey feedback include, one with a much more robust additional feature of the fountain idea or symbology on the top right, and then more of the kind of implied symbology around the fountain sign. The top one would be kind of your high-end cost, the following, the bottom would be your low-end cost. More important for council to understand is that they can be unpackaged or uncoupled from one another in that the base where it says City of Fountain, Pure Colorado, is the emphasis, is that we can place that sign on the existing footings of those external gateway signs already without, in the option, if the desire is to not use the symbology or the fountain itself, we would not need that. If it were something, as a disclaimer, we would be able to require a new footing and engineering design to put that sign up there. But nonetheless, the replacement of those signs is something that is key to an effective system and would be done towards the latter end of the 10-year phasing plan. Next slide.
Nate, stay there.
Oh, I'll go back.
Your slide is missing all the beautiful colors, so for people that can't see it, the City of Fountain part at the top is a beautiful blue, like you were seeing in some of the side colors. The Pure Colorado part is red, and then the bricks is kind of like a gray or something and tan.
Yeah, if it's not showing, it's hard to see from this angle, but it's a little muted in terms of the...
Yeah, I just want to make sure people out there kind of can get the gist of how beautiful the colors are.
Yes, so, thank you.
And if people are looking at it online, you know, I don't know why yours is not coming up pretty colors, but it is.
Yeah, the plan is now available for viewing, so anybody who's interested after this will direct you to that option. I'm sorry, upon, at conclusion of this meeting, I should say.
Nate, I want to really make sure that we're really clear on that. It probably won't be available for viewing until it's made ADA compliant. There's some requirements that we have to have for that.
I appreciate that clarification.
It'll be available for viewing in person, but not through the normal means because of the recent...
That is a very astute point, yeah. We would have, you have to request special access at this point until we do make the document more available per ADA compliance on our website. Thank you. And then the emphasis, so this last slide here I'll be presenting is to share the importance of joint collaborative efforts between the city and our regional agency partners. That includes CDOT and El Paso County Parks and Public Works. We worked with both of those agencies throughout our efforts to assist us in making certain analytical and placement decision, placement decisions for our signs. CDOT was very integral in giving us emphasis on the classification eligibility of the sign based on the right-of-way, being able to put certain signs in medians, whether or not certain jurisdictions owned the land or not. That was the emphasis throughout CDOT's collaboration with us. And then the agency effort between El Paso County and Parks and Public Works was quite a good relationship. The intention here is that we were intending to coordinate the implementation of signage along shared trails and roadways, which would provide clear and consistent messaging. So as you can see, those two examples of those signs, either one of those signs is using a similar color palette to the logo and the county's branding efforts, but also, the emphasis is also on being able to work collaboratively on a decision for how and who maintains these signs. At this time, we left that decision for what would be a future memorandum of understanding between those two respective jurisdictions to collaborate and make the determination on maintenance and cost allocations for those signs. So that is still pending. And at this time, I believe that concludes for my part. I will let Ms. Kimberly Bailey come up and speak to the prioritization of the signage.
Thank you, Nate. Greetings, Mayor, Council, public. Glad to walk you through the last of the journey here. And the last time we were in front of you was just after Memorial Day, so you really did get the abbreviation of what we shared with you prior. We want to step into the future scope now at this point. So the prioritization, as Nate referenced, is per the, both the public's engagement, but also the steering committee that really helped steward this byproduct. So the focus will be on vehicular first and the implementation strategy, also identifying those district boundaries, recognizing that district boundary signs is such a small quantitative value because there's only five districts. Two points of entry, that gets you 10 signs, right? And so that might be an easier one to chip away at from a cost investment perspective. Then you have trails and park signage. Your pedestrian is very minute at this point in the focus of prioritization. And then lastly is those I-25 gateway signs. And since they are kind of more of a larger impact from an investment value, those can occur at any time within the cycle that funding or appropriation may become available. So with that said, just referencing that the scope of work did entail the entire 85-87 corridor. As you can see, it does touch all five business districts, and that is why the Urban Renewal Authority did fund 37% in a co-match to complete this plan endeavor. As you can see in that prioritization that we just ran through at the top here, it does filter to each district, understanding that Parks and Recreation and Trails is not a district but a separate category, okay? So the cost variables, we did discuss and disclose to you at the Memorial Day presentation, and this was basically the general swag of what the investment value would look at. Now what we are presenting to you is the quantitative value per the district category of signage in the family set. So overall, it's about 430 signage, and I don't want that to scare anybody away from this presentation because what we do from this point forward is that we then really look at a macro management at the department level. For example, Gordy, as your Parks Director, would look at what is the prioritization need of the overall park signages that has been identified here. So it wouldn't be a huge undertaking on the onset, it would be a structural management process. Same thing with vehicular signage. Vehicular signage would be managed by PD as well as the Streets Director. And so we will work with them and identify some of those critical crash intersections or areas that really need better delineated navigational awareness to improve those corridors. So from a strategy perspective, we are looking at an entire investment value of 1.4 million approximately. That's if we do 100% of the quantitative signage identified, and that is over a lifespan of 10 years. So to strategically implement, you have to put a goal marker at the end of your project scope. And so theoretically, we felt that 10 years was a respectable timeframe to manage the scope of the project. Any questions there? Because I know this is a very pertinent topic, if you wanted to address anything here specifically.
I don't know if it's a question, but I don't like to do math in public, but it seems like you have two pedestrian kiosk signs, but three total at the bottom.
I'm sorry, I'm at an angle I can't quite see.
Pedestrian kiosks, shows two and then three.
Yes. So that would be a correction we would just need to make in the quantitization.
So there's not a third one missing?
No, I don't believe so because they are very demure in the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I also just want a footnote for you because everybody overlooks the footnotes. These costs do include materials plus cost of labor for installation. Okay, so the economic benefits, because the reason that the strategic objective was assigned under the former strategic plan of council was to support business development. And we do want to make sure that you understand that this does will increase spending rates in the business corridors. It'll draw more attention for business investment and small business in the community. And that is something that has really been echoed, not only in other initiatives with business coordination, but actually as most recently as the Parks Master Plan kickoff that happened about two months ago. And so one of the strategic analysis was you need to improve better navigation and wayfinding among your parks and trails and network. So it's really, really a full carry-through on an investment cycle. In addition to that, it will increase tourism-related dollars. Tourism comes in many forms, right? We don't have the Olympic Museum or things of that stature, but we do have historical elements in our community, and that folklore and enrichment of the western scape is very important and brings in those external dollars to us. In addition to that, it does bring in more community events or vendors such as food trucks or ancillary services that are missing in our community district areas. And then lastly, hopefully, it reduces PD's time and expenditures or FD in regards to crash rate responsiveness and things like that. If you have better navigational awareness, as you approach intersections of confliction points, that is much more reducing those hazards that may occur from vehicular crashes and/or unfortunately, loss of pedestrians trying to cross certain corridors. And then as we started off the plan with Phase One, through the totality of completion of this process of master plan adoption, we are severely undersigned. We have less than 10% in our community, and that really, really does have a strong ripple effect in regards to business areas of development and investment. So I will say, the master plan was a huge undertaking and really, really got a lot of good steward guidance by our consultant team and a representative is here, Kristin Cyfer, which we haven't quite had the courtesy to introduce her yet. But if you have questions, we're more than glad to bring her to the table. However, the golden deliverables of this project is the five supplementals because this really puts us in a great trajectory to go forward. Under that, we received signage pinpoints of location placements in a GIS platform. So that total caveat of 430 signages, we already have identified the allowance of right-of-way, we have CDOT's permission to proceed if we, at the point of on-curing procurement for this endeavor of investment, and the unincorporated jurisdiction with El Paso County. So we already have that all mapped out. In addition to that, we already have the signage that goes on the backer boards of that structural improvement. So those are two great deliverables. The third one that we do have is also the big procurement process. So as this is more of a transportation process going forward at this point, you would look at the Streets Director and/or Public Works and/or even Parks, if we just do a separate one for Parks and Trails, under a bid procurement process, that document's ready to issue. We just got to put in the specifications thereof. In addition, we have the maintenance manual at the after-set of when these signs are actually implemented through that 10-year trajectory period. actually implemented through that 10-year trajectory period. Lastly, this will take a gravitation of additional investment funding outside of our own general revenues of budget. That was very pertinent in the top four categories that Public did give us in feedback. And so we do have the funding guide as well as a template for staff to start looking at those ancillary avenues of funding. So, what's presented to you tonight is an action item. And that action item is purely adopting the master plan that's been recited to you in a final deliverable, plus the five supplementals that we've reviewed. It is a non-funded action. I want to be explicitly clear on that at this point in time. So, that is the one measure, and I will pause there for a second in your minds. The steps thereafter shall be including a future implementation. So on your strategic plan boards behind us, you did identify transportation and supporting business development. This falls into both of those strategic plan measures. The strategic objective you have assigned to us is BD4, going for. And that is to identify pertinent areas of future investment and/or installation of signage. And so, at a future point, by December of 2026, staff shall come back to you with those future recommendations and/or the supplemental pairings of funding to support that initiative So just going back, what's presented to you is action item on Resolution 25-027, I believe the city clerk assigned to us, on this measure presented to you tonight. And of course, we will pause for any other questions you may have.
Okay, I got a couple lights on here. Councilmember Rick?
Okay, so, we're not approving funding tonight.
Correct.
Okay. Budget typically starts August, September, then we kind of finish it up in October, November. Are we going to have something, some funding laid out by then, or is it going to need to go roll into the next year?
We already have our increment funding swags of per signage, per areas of investment. What we need to do for staff for next steps is we will pull in PD, we will pull in streets, and we will pull in parks. They manage at their department level what quantitative value of a signage is priority and important to the community, and then we would roll up a recommendation of such investment needs.
Second question and last question. You said 1.47 million, I believe, over 10 years, is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay. So that average is out to about $147,000 a year.
Correct.
When I look, I'm not sure that's going to be, I'm not sure you're going to be able to hit that average. What I would like to see, when you bring the funding, is give me like a graph showing, okay, here's what the funding is going to be by year. Because Councilmember Geek and I were looking just to do the street signs as like 357,000. And that's at the median cost estimate. So obviously, you're not going to be able to hit all those the first year. I'd like to see something that kind of explains how we're going to do that out, especially that, that one that's like, the one at the exit 28, the big one.
Oh, the two on 125?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, those are expensive mamajamas. I want to...
Yes, they are. And we can shrink the size of each sign based on the family set that is available within the signage assortment. For example, under vehicular, there were three different sizes of signs, right? And so for us to maybe reach a sweet spot in attainable funding, we might pick option B or C, right? Instead of the larger footprint. And that's what the value of this plan is. It really gives us a lot of flexibility to adapt based on budget or reserve constraints, but also what gives us the highest value of return for the community investment.
Thank you for that. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions up here? I think my concern with the question you just answered for Councilmember Rick is starting to piecemeal signs. You know, we can pick A, B, or C. If we pick B for this one, and then they come back and pick A for that one, and they pick C for that, we're going to end up with a really kind of messy sign.
I understand what you're saying.
What's the word I'm looking for?
Symmetry.
It's just not going to be cohesive. We're not going to have a cohesive project. And so I think at some point, we need to decide, are we doing the foo-foo thing on the sign on I-25? Because that leads into the design you pick for the sign that you're going to have as an entryway sign, if you're going to have that. And so I want to make sure the project is cohesive. And while I understand tonight, all we're doing is accepting this report, and we're not putting any funding or choices behind it, I just, I have some concerns of us ending up with a citywide cohesive project.
And I recognize that, for sure. If you wouldn't mind me to follow up on a comment to that concern. I will say that each of the signs are very complimentary in the universal scope. We have our artist with us tonight, of course, and she's right behind me. This is great. So what I would say also is, you know, we know on I-25, that is the bigger chunk to address, and it's really going to be based on when the funding really aligns to do that mass improvement. Because there's a lot of coordination with Public Works and CDOT, right-of-way, and things that have to be managed for authorization of access, okay? To start that proceedings of improvement. But the box could be still implemented without the curvatures of the fountain as well. So we made it so it's adaptable in a future installation point or where the funds are amicably addressed.
Right. But if you could back up a few slides to the one where we had...
I was, it's just it's a bulk file, so I'm going to let Easy do it if you wouldn't mind, because it is pretty dense.
Keep going.
Yeah. So as we said in the...
No, I wanted the slide where we have the three pillars.
Keep going.
Okay, so the vehicular first set?
Yeah, so right here.
Oh, okay.
So depending on which side would get chosen here, and they might get chosen in one phase, and if you pick the middle one, you're like almost committing the larger I-25 sign to have that behind it and the other signs around the city to have that. And so every, we need to, they need to make sure whatever choice they pick at the beginning, if they're going with the one on the far left, which matches the interstate sign without the separate piece behind it, I think you need to make that choice much sooner in the process so people aren't picking, you know, the I-25 simple sign because they don't want to spend the extra money, but yet we've on the interior of the city, we've picked these other designs, and I don't think people are going to get the whole cohesion of the project that I think we're looking for. That's, I'm probably explaining it as clear as mud, but it makes perfect sense to me. So Councilmember Hinton, maybe you can...
Well, I was just going to say, I think whatever direction we go, it just has to be aesthetically pleasing to the eye, and then it just has to kind of just flow throughout the city.
Yeah.
I think that's where, I think the mayor's trying to explain, just a pattern that is cohesive throughout the city. I understand that there are going to be sometimes, obviously in the parks, they're not going to be as tall or as wide, but I think just the aesthetic, the eye-pleasing helps visualize the individual seeing what they need to see, where they need to go. Sometimes people can kind of, if it's mumbo-jumbo and different, people just kind of get lost in there. And I don't know if that's just, you know, a brain thing, but I think that's just being consistent throughout.
Makes total sense. And I'm going to let Kristen have a few moments if you want to address anything in that.
Can we get through all the questions first and then maybe...
Well, you're just on design, and so this is her palette, so I didn't know if you wanted to.
I've got, I've got a couple more lights on up here, so.
Okay.
I think Councilmember Rick was next, and then Councilmember Duncan.
So, this question is for Scott and Shawna. If we adopt this resolution tonight, and then when they come with the actual budget recommendations and the numbers are just astronomically high, if we adopt this resolution, is that binding us to approve that, or can we go no?
No. I think the way this is structured is actually, actually works really well from a council priority standpoint, because in order to sort of give a projection, they created a 10-year window, right? With sort of this assumption that if you wanted to get all these done in 10 years, it'd be about 147,000, 149,000, whatever that number was a year. But the reality is, as a council, this council and future councils will have those discussions. And you might have a council one year that says, hey, we really need to focus our priority dollars in other areas. And so that year, you guys may say, hey, whatever minimal sign replacements you're going to be doing, streets, do them in this new design, but we're not going to be budgeting any additional dollars, right? And other years, you may say, you know what, this is a year for us to do the big, huge I-25 sign upgrade or whatever. So we have 100%, when I say we, really you as a council have 100% flexibility to decide each and every year what you really are going to do. Doesn't have to be 147,000, it could be 10,000, right? Just means we'll do fewer, right? You might, you might decide to do more, but there's nothing that binds us to do that.
Okay. And then, just a request, if we can get this, you know, when they do come with the money requests, if we can get that as a part of the budget process rather than something separate, you know?
In fact, I made that same note, yeah.
Yeah. Don't come in April and say, here, approve this when I'm, when I'm not in the budget cycle.
Yep.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
So I don't know if I'm speaking ahead of time, turn, but on the design for the parks, do they have to be ADA compliant?
Yes.
And so, how would, when you say ADA, what does that mean? Does that mean that it's going to have braille? Does it mean it's going to be like you push a button and it tells you where you are? Can you tell me what that looks like?
Well, initially, I would say it's going to be the color hue that's already been assigned, which is ADA compliant code already, and then the reflectiveness of the lettering or the application symbols. We decided that the universal language is symbol communication, right? So you have an icon for restaurants, you have an icon for a field, you have, you know, that is really the universal approach for communication in the field. Anything else you'd like to add on ADA compliance?
That covers it really well.
Okay.
I will say that, you know, when you talk about ADA in regard to signage, we just are attenable to things. There are documents that say the text has to be this large if you are this far away from it, the cone of information has to be viewable for someone standing, someone who might be sitting in a wheelchair. So the size of the letters has something to do with that. The shape and the size of the arrow also has something to do with that. It's a very distinct arrow. You can definitely, it doesn't, I mean, CDOT, for better or for worse, their arrows can kind of be two together. It's hard to see which way it is if you're quite far away. The more distinct you can have those arrows be, the better. And then, as Kim said, we look at things like contrast. We have to meet a certain level of contrast between the letters and the background so that it is considered acceptable and legible by literally like engineering standards that we go by. So it's kind of nerdy, it's not as cool as it sounds. But it's in regard to braille, we typically only do that if we're doing transit signage, right? Where we know that that's 42 inches off the ground. If you are relying on braille, you know where to find that information. That's not to say that we couldn't put that information on these signs in the future if you wanted to add that element. It's really not that hard. Again, it's just the regulatory piece of where it's located on the sign, what that plaque looks like. It usually does have to be a separate plaque so that you can find it. It's pretty cut and dry. We didn't do that because the regulations say it's really transit where that matters, unless you're inside. If you're outside, it's totally different than inside as far as like requirements for braille. Like every building, all these signs will have to have braille on them.
Okay. So if I was visually impaired, would I be able to put my hand over the arrow and feel which way it goes?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
In fact, you can't reach up to get them ideally. They're seven feet off the ground, so unless you're super tall, there's a limit, that's a MUTCD standard too. Anything has to be seven feet at its lowest.
Could you please speak in the microphone? People online can't hear.
I'm so sorry. That's another ADA standard, is everything has to be seven feet at its lowest, so it doesn't, you're not able to hit it, or ideally, it helps protect it from vandalism too, just because it's that high off the ground. So you'll notice seven feet, seven feet is kind of everywhere as far as the lowest thing on every sign that sticks out.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that that fabrication guide, that I said it was one of those five supplemental golden deliverables, it addresses all those specifications that Kristen just went over with you. Yes.
Yes, so I just have a question for you, Scott. So you said that, you know, we can parse mail this and do this, you know, one year we'll do, if we wanted to do 10,000. But my only concern with this, and I love this, by the way, my only concern with this, each year, labor and materials go, costs go up.
That's right.
It doesn't go down. I mean, I don't think we're going to get a, you know, a break on that. So I just wanted to just make sure the council is aware of that, you know, we parse mails this, and we kind of do this here and there, the costs will go up. So just making sure that we're aware of that.
Yeah, I agree with the piecemealing. I just want to make sure the overall design is decided, the first sign that we order, not... And my other concern is, doing this in a 10-year project is, I don't know how many times you've done stuff at your house, but you start to do something, and you start in one room, and by the time you get to the third room, the product isn't available any longer, you know? So you try to do something that matches, and I want to make sure we're choosing materials that aren't trendy necessarily, they're going to be available long-term. Because if this is going to be a long-term project, we want to make sure that the same material is available all the way to the end. And everything comes warranted, I assume. So if the ADA guy does the signs wrong, it's on him to refix them.
Yes.
Okay.
It does.
All right, any other questions from council? Okay, we threw a ton of information at you, we asked you to wait till we asked all our questions. I'm going to give you a few minutes, and then I'll open it up to the audience to see if anybody wants to ask any questions.
Sure. So let me give Kristen, our consultant, the floor. If you wanted to address anything further on cohesive signage, a signage plan, how we address that. So I'll give you the mic.
Thank you. So I, you know, after a year and a half of working with Kim and Nate, you would think that they would be as particular about this document as me, but they are not. It's a lot of information, but in it is exactly what you've asked for. So even though we have these different options, we're very deliberate about where they go. So if you want to go back to the slide that has the auto-directionals, for example, I just want to be clear so you don't think it's willy-nilly, because I am not a willy-nilly.
It's the first design slide.
Yeah, the very first one. Thank you. Keep, one more. Perfect. So, these represent different levels of investment and also different types of information in a subtle way. Obviously, the directional information, the district information is the same, but the sort of oomph of it is more oomphy on the left side. It's less oomphy on the right. The majority of the signs specified in the KMZ Google document that is GIS are this sign. This is your workhorse sign. They only get special...
I'm sorry, could you please describe what you mean by this sign?
The sign on the far right.
Thank you.
We were told from the beginning that costs were very important, and we took that very seriously. This is a very cost-effective sign. You need a lot of auto-directional signs because you do have such a deficit. There's just nothing that helps you get around, which is why, you know, when we went out to the public, people were like, when are we in Fountain? Or like, oh, what's in Fountain? The military community especially is very confused. So anytime that you are moving from one district to another, anytime that you are in a district, once you've passed the threshold, all the signs are the signs on the right. If you are coming to an entrance to a district, you will choose either the sign on the far left or the sign in the middle, and I left that up to you guys to pick. But there, you can tell they're just a little bit extra special. The one on the far left has City of Fountain at the bottom, and the five stars just as an echo to that symbology that's across the sign family. And the one in the middle has that really nice corrugated material that just creates a little bit more oomph on the base, so that it's a little bit more, has a little more presence. And the reason that we do special things like this at the entrance to a district is because it isn't the regular sign. It kind of wakes people up, just like the boundary signs do. It says, oh, maybe I'm entering into something special here. And obviously, the color would do that, the language, the old town, you know, that all changes as you go from one district to another. But it is very specific about which signs are this sign and which signs are either the sign on the far left or the middle. And again, this sign's the one on the right. So, I mean, I'm not great at numbers and percentages in my head, but over 90% of the signs are the sign on the right. And that's for monetary reasons, but it's also just for, why would you? These are signs that are going to be, as Nate pointed out, passing hopefully at 45 miles an hour, not faster, but you don't need all the froo-for-all for just a sign that's... But you don't need all the froo-for-all for just a sign that's trying to get you to places. And it's still nice, it still evokes the character of the rest of it, but it's very specific as far as like which one goes where. And that is also true for the gateways. So, you know, times change, it's 10-year plan. Right now, for example, I don't have any extra pieces. If you could go forward a couple slides, I just want to talk to this, yeah. So like right now, there is a gateway that is located at the bridge. So the southernmost entrance into Fountain, when you get off I-25, you come across, you go across the bridge heading to Old Town. That will probably be updated in the future, but right now, the only footprint we've got fits the sign on the far left. It can also fit the sign on the far right, so that's your choice. You can economize and choose one or the other. They both represent the same kind of look and feel. But if that sign is installed, for example, after the bridge is widened, there's a new bridge, there might be more room. And then you can have the choice of saying, well, if we want to put some more money into it, we can sort of do the oomphy of this. But there's only one location right now that actually has the space and the C dot right-of-way to accommodate these extra things. And it's coming into town, into Old Town on 85, north-south. So, and again, it's not an arbitrary number, it's, there are two extras. And that is what we've specified. So it's flexible, you can choose differently, but it's not like we've left it open-ended. It definitely says in the location plan what is expected at each location, location with specificity. Sorry, thank you. That's really all I had as far as that just, you know, as the sign person, I'm like, no, 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 I'm, I'm specific.
Okay, Councilmember Hinton.
Yeah, I know we're spending a lot of time on the signs and I just want to reiterate to the public that, you know, I'll share a personal story. I grew up in Boston, there's signs everywhere. I grew up right outside of Malden, Massachusetts, and I went back probably three years ago. And they've improved that city by signs. Small businesses have benefit from the signs that they have. And I grew up signs, to the Orange Line, it's one of the best cities with the best transportation for subways, buses, and so I'm very familiar with this. And these signs are important. I know it's something that people's, ah, why are we talking about this? But it is something that can vitalize the city. It is important to, to help direct people that come into the city, know where things are at. Because if they know where things are at, they'll go and spend their money there. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, any last questions from the council up here? It just needs to be cohesive. All right, do any questions from anybody in the audience? Please come down and state your name for the record. And then, do we have anybody online that's raised their hand either? If anybody online wants to make a comment, please raise your hand. What, Sam, could I get you, there you go, middle, thank you.
Name's Sam, who's paying for the maintenance?
The maintenance has been determined it would be a consultant service that would be outsourced to pay, cover those services.
Is that covered in the $1.5 million budget?
No.
So we need to include more money on top of the 1.5? I think that's what you were leaning towards earlier, Mayor, when you were trying to find out what was all the hidden fees. There's a hidden fee right there, maintenance.
Everything we purchase has maintenance.
Now, you're talking about a 10-year plan, though.
I understand that, right.
But we all know colors fade, especially in the Colorado sun. These colors aren't going to be the same after one month. And you want to do this over 10 years? It's not, nothing's going to match, it ain't going to look right. I think that's something that needs to really be considered. But I mean, earlier, you said the C dot and Parks and Recs was going to be helping with the maintenance? Was that right?
C dot will not, El Paso County and incorporated jurisdictions and along the trail networks, yes.
What are we going to do when they say no?
They would be under an MOU and would be obligated to share those cost services. We'll have to cross that threshold at the pivot point of timing of consideration.
All things considered, I mean, everybody's budget's getting cut. And then you want to put these up around all the shopping centers. Well, what's, is the city doing to put pressure on the property owners to fix their parking lots? Safeway, Walmart? Why should we give them the benefit of sending them more business if they're not going to fix their stuff?
We understand this, those parking lots are one of the biggest complaints we get in this city and we speak with them quite frequently.
Why would we give them something that would benefit them then?
Because it benefits the other businesses in the city and makes us stronger.
And then it benefits that property owner with that 1%.
I'm sorry?
And it benefits the property owner with that 1%.
I don't understand.
What is that 1% tax called? The fees the property owners can put on when you go to those shops up there on the mesa.
The RTA tax?
No, not the RTA, the other one.
Because the shops up on the mesa, up on.
Yeah, like you go up to the pet store, you go buy your dog food, you get charged an extra 1% and it's for the property owner.
So there's a public improvement fee that is a 1%?
That goes to the property owner.
That goes to the developer who did the site plan?
Exactly, who isn't doing anything to fix the site.
Okay.
Is what I'm saying.
I understand, yeah.
We're giving them money in their pocket and now you want to send more traffic their way, put more money in their pocket and they're not going to do anything. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience or any raised hands online?
Yes, ma'am.
The person online, if you could go ahead, IT is going to unmute you. Do they need to unmute themselves? If we could speak a little louder, please, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Connie Weisenhund, good evening. I just wanted to ask Ms. Bailey a couple of questions. I'm a small business owner and this makes me very, very excited to know that people will have an opportunity to know what is in what shopping center and that kind of thing as we're all barely making it out here. But a couple of meetings ago, you spoke about there being, is it like a grant that's available for these? And then also some kind of the signage that will like slide in and slide out to maintain the signs? Can you touch base on that as well? And I'm excited and I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Connie, appreciate those comments. Sure, I'm glad to address that. So yes, there is grant funding sources identified within the grant guide that was identified as one of those five supplemental golden deliverables in this plan. Also, I just really want to echo that the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority did fund this initial plan for the US 85 corridor. They are still very pro-supportive of the future implementation needs of the plan. And at the point that we do recommend budget appropriation needs or identify complementary match funding of grants, then they will also be in a, in a position to consider supporting the endeavors going forward. So I'll identify that first. The second one that you mentioned, yes, the blades that have been identified, and I hate to go back again because that file is just so large with graphics, but the per-blades were designed to be individual swap-outs. So as things change, as growth occurs or shifts of use of amenities happen, then the blades individually have been designed to be dropped off and new ones implemented. So the signage structure is fully adaptable to the future needs of the community corridor. I hope that addressed both your questions.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other raised hands online?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I just really would like to emphasize, Scott, I want to make sure that we somehow budget for the maintenance of these signs. You know, when we went through the sign process years and years ago before I was even on council, I was on the sign group. We made certain plans for things and they didn't happen, you know. And I want to make sure that we, you know, budget for new blades every once in a while. Like, like, like Sam said, Mr. Fortune, I lost your last name there for a second. Mr. Fortune said, you know, if they fade, you know, we need to replace the colors faster than anticipated or something. You know, I, I want to make sure that we're budgeting for that in these numbers also. That said, if there's any more questions, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But that said, unless there's any more questions, let's go ahead and bring this back up to the dais. And last chance for council for any comments or deliberation. Otherwise, I'm going to ask what council would like to do with this. Councilmember Hersberg.
I'd like to move to approve Resolution 25-027.
Okay, Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further deliberation? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carry.
Okay, we've been at this for a while, so I'm going to go, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. So I'm putting the meeting into recess until 7:55. The July 22, 2025 Fountain City Council meeting. We are now on Item 9C, Resolution 25-029, a resolution authorizing the city. I'm trying to rush this through, man, I'm moving on through, I got them.
You can skip mine if you'd like.
All right.
Nice try.
Nice try, okay.
I wish to see what Councilmember Rick said.
I was seeing if everybody's paying attention, okay? Mm-hmm. All right, Item 9A, new business, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda, there were none. Resolution 9B, Resolution 25-028, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY 2025 budgeted funds. Ms. Dale?
I'll take it.
I think we're going to have some deliberation there.
All right, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for having me tonight. I bring before you tonight the third supplemental for the fiscal year 2025 budget. As we all know, the budget was adopted for 2025 on November 12, 2024.
Resolution 9B, Resolution 25-028, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY 2025 budgeted funds. Ms. Dale. I think we're gonna have some deliberation there.
All right, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me tonight. I bring before you tonight the third supplemental for the fiscal year 2025 budget. As we all know, the budget was adopted for 2025 on November 12, 2024, and has been previously amended on January 28 and April 8 of this year. Since then, city personnel have identified additional necessary expenditures and additional revenues corresponding with some of those expenditures that were not included in the original 2025 budget. The largest portion of this supplemental that I bring before you tonight has to do with the increase in revenues and corresponding expenditures in the general fund for an increase in all of the intergovernmental service agreements, the IGSA contracts with Fort Carson. In addition, there are some other expenditures which have increased insurance premiums and deductibles from our insurance carrier and public safety, radio, and vehicle purchases that were ordered in 2024 but not received until 2025. As always, the supplementary budget process is considered a standard best practice for the Governmental Accountant Standing Board. And so with that, I will move into Exhibit A, which has a summary for the general fund. If you notice, there are about $4 million in increased revenues from the IGSA programs. And then on the bottom, the expenditures for the general fund, the biggest portion of that is also a $3.3 million increase in the expenses that coincide with the revenues for the IGSA contracts. In addition, there are the, as previously discussed, the increases in the property casualty insurance premiums and deductibles. $20,000 for, $20,000, excuse me, for radio purchases for the fire department. $86,000 for the upfitting of new PD vehicles, which were purchased last year. And then $15,000 for the final payment of the pavement study for streets. Overall, in the general fund, and I apologize that this is kind of hard to read on this PowerPoint. Hopefully, the exhibit in your packet is a little clearer. But overall, there's actually an increase to the general fund reserve of $206,000. However, I will say there's a note down at the bottom there that the upfitting of $86,000 for the police vehicles will actually come out of the remaining 2024 lease proceeds that we have held in escrow with that bank. So this is actually be an increase to the general fund reserves of about $293,000. Please keep in mind, when it's concerning the IGSA revenue and expenses, the IGSA revenues are all table exempt. So this is actually a very good increase for the general fund, uh, reserve fund. The other, excuse me, the other three funds that are affected by this supplemental are the transportation fund, the water fund, and the electric fund. These will all be a decrease in their reserves or net positions, and those are all just simply due to the increase in the insurance premiums and deductible cost for 2025. So with that, I will open it up to council with any questions.
Councilmember Rick.
Scott.
Scott just walked out of the room.
He ran away.
He went to get his glasses.
The increase in property casualty insurance premiums is deductible. Is that because of something we've done that they're increasing? Or it's just everybody's getting hit with saving?
No, it is not due to anything that we did specifically. We are part of SIRS, which is a pool insurance for local governments, and it was just an increase overall in the entire pool. They, as we previously discussed during last year's budget work sessions, if you'll remember, part of it was that they chose to increase a lot of their deductibles from the damages that we would, we used to pay $1,000 deductible for like auto damage. Now our deductible's $5,000 per incident. So it was just across the board. Everybody in the pool was affected by these increases from SIRS.
Okay, that's all I had, ma'am, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I do have a couple of questions on this. If you could go back to the summary slide, that one right there.
Yep.
I really wish Scott was in here. Because you haven't set the money aside for just the deck. So I want to make sure that we're setting those policies and procedures for what to do with the IGSA funds, so they're not just getting absorbed into things like this. And then on, I'm just a little curious. We usually come back for a supplemental on a budget because we've had to carry funds over or, you know, or an expense over or something. I'm just curious why on the, um, final payment on the radio purchases for the fire department and the strategic engineer pavement study, if those were things we were already making payments on and we knew there was going to come a final payment due, why that final payment wasn't included in the original budget?
I will actually let Scott speak to the pavement study one because I'm not 100% sure on that one. However, as far as the radios, that was just an oversight where we had those funds budgeted in 2024, but they weren't spent because they were ordered at the end of 2024 and they weren't received until 2025. And they should have been included on the first supplemental that we brought to you this year.
Right, but, okay. Mike, do you want me to start again on my question? Because she said you get part of it and you didn't hear the question. Yeah, I know.
Good timing.
Yeah, it was, yeah, he started it and didn't even. Okay, if you're like me, you have 10 pairs and you can't find any of them, right? Okay, all right. My question was, just questioning on, and on the radio purchase for the fire department and this engineering pavement study. If we were already making payment on those items, why the final payments weren't, knowing they're coming up, why they weren't included in the original budget? And she said on the first one, the fire department radios was just her error.
Well, real quick, I will also speak to that. Another point to that also is that if you notice, this is actually an operational account, not a capital account. And we can't carry forward operational funds. We can only carry forward capital improvement projects, and that was not what this was. So it was budgeted in 2024 as an operational expense. And so since we didn't receive them until 2025, we have to now increase the operational expense here because we didn't budget for the operational expense here because we can't carry it forward since it's not a capital project.
That, that's the radio piece. Let me speak to the engineering piece.
I just, I'm not trying to argue with you. It just seems buying a radio is a capital improvement. It's a capital thing.
You would think.
Yeah, I mean, it just.
It's not, yeah. It's, it's, what defines capital is really the size. It's the dollar amount. It's the dollar amount, it's the life of the, yeah, so.
Okay.
Fire truck, for sure, radio, no, yeah. I mean, for, for most of us normally, yeah, it's a capital piece of equipment. But from an accounting standpoint, it's not considered capital. So it's not.
Because if you were a business, you would be having to declare that on your, on your.
Well, we're, we're held to the governmental accounting standards, and yeah, yeah. Some of the reasons they do things don't make a lot of sense.
All right, and the other one?
The other one, the, the pavement study was one where we've been trying to get billing from, from the company for a year now. And so it's been a matter of them not invoicing us, not invoicing us, and we finally got that. But it was past the beginning of the year. And that's our, that's our last payment.
Right, okay. It just seems like if you know it's coming, it still would have been in the budget. But, and then, and I kind of had the same questions on the upliftings for the PDD vehicles. Is it because it's operational and not capital, even though we're improving a vehicle?
Mayor, I want to address that last comment about it being in the budget. It was in the budget in 2024. Because we plan on spending it. That's why when I say we haven't received an invoice for that long.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, okay. Because people are gonna say in my household budget, if I still owe money, I'm gonna put it in my, you know, budget. But, okay. All right, and the last one on the upliftings?
On the, on the upfittings, those should have been carried forward from '24 into '25, but they were not. So, and a lot of that was just because, at least for me, we didn't know that they still had to be done because those upfittings weren't even completed until March or April, and the carry forwards were completed sooner than that. And those, actually, like I said in the note down here at the bottom, those are still going to be coming out of the lease proceeds because we had those budgeted out of the lease proceeds, and we have not spent those lease proceeds yet until now for this.
Okay.
I do want to add one last thing on the upfittings. We've been, we've been using a company, I can't remember the name of the company. Watts. We've been using Watts, a company to upfit our vehicles, and we're probably no longer going to be using them. The cost is higher than it really needs to be. We can do it a lot cheaper in-house. Takes, takes a little bit longer to get it through them because you have to get in line. So there's a whole bunch of reasons. We're probably just gonna be going back to doing it in-house again.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Any questions from anybody in the audience? My one audience member. All right, any hands online?
Yes, ma'am, Connie again.
Okay, thank you. If person on the line, please unmute, state your name, and ask your question.
Good evening, Connie Weisenhut. Shawna, I wondered if you could go back and rename the three that have a decrease. So transportation was one, and there were two others. And teach me or others who might want to learn what it means when there's a decrease. So is that a decrease in funds in the budget for those departments? And how does that affect them? Please and thank you.
Sure, not a problem, Connie. So the, the other three funds that were affected, and Bezi, could you go? Because the clicker's not working to the very last slide. Thank you. So you've got the transportation fund, the water fund, and the electric fund. Those are the other funds outside the general fund that will be affected. And those are actually, excuse me, a decrease in the net position of those funds, which is essentially the fund balance for our proprietary funds, for our water and electric funds. So it's pulling from the reserves from those funds because those weren't initially budgeted for. So what was the other part of your question, Connie?
I just wondered how those three are affected for our community members? Or is, is the funds that are being pooled gonna cover that? And then how do we recover those funds? Because sooner or later, we need to plan on putting them back, correct?
Well, it, so those will hopefully be covered by revenues. So currently, because it shows it as a decrease on the supplemental because they're not offsetting revenues in this supplemental. But overall, in the budgets for when we get to the year end, the revenues coming into those funds should cover the decrease or the increased expenses, which would then, which currently show as a decrease in the net position for those funds.
Perfect, understood. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Everybody's getting hit with insurance increases. Unfortunately. This was, this is a big one.
Personally and professionally.
Yeah, but this is a very big one, yeah. So, all right, any questions? Bring it back up to the dais. What would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hersberg.
I'd like to move to approve Resolution 25-028.
Councilmember Estes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carry.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us on to Item C, Resolution 25-029, a resolution authorizing the City of Fountain to enter into a sales agreement with a company for the purchase of smart restrooms for Aga Park. I'm sure you can pronounce that company, huh?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm here tonight presenting Resolution 25-029 to authorize the City of Fountain to enter into a sales agreement with Urban Blue for the purchase and installation of smart restrooms at Aga Park, not to exceed $365,000. This project is largely, largely being funded by a grant we received from CDOT in an amount of $250. So our contribution to this, to the smart restroom's gonna be $115,000, giving us that $365 total to purchase the restroom. And that'll meet the requirement of our 10% match in order to receive the grant that, that you consented to last week. Urban Blue, the reason we went with them, they're a North American company, one of two. The other one's in Washington DC. Urban Blue's been in business a lot longer, and their vandalism, pre-measures they take to keep the restroom from being vandalized are better. And the big one is their self-cleaning. The other modular restroom companies haven't got the self-cleaning feature yet. And that helps us save in water and staff time. Whenever the bathrooms can close themselves for five minutes and then clean themselves and reopen themselves back up. I don't have to send somebody down there to take care of that now. And pending your questions, that's all I have for this resolution.
I just wanted to correct, you said $250, it's $250,000.
Yeah, I always think in little numbers, it's easier in my head.
I do that, too. I take the zeros off to look at the numbers, yeah. Okay, Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, real quick, Gordy, I had an opportunity to run into one of our citizens at the, at the Thunder in the Valley. And they were talking about the bathrooms there at McCaff Park and then how, you know, it's just kind of understandard and not having proper hand wash in there. There's no soap, there's nothing like that. And so I expressed to her that we're trying to do our very best to improve that and invited her to come out to city council. But is there, is there any way we can kind of get some soap or hand sanitizer or something in there to just make sure people can, you know, properly sanitize their hands?
Yes, yes, we can get some more up. We put it up about six to seven times a year. It just doesn't stay on the walls very long. And so it's a order it wait for it to come in, just a continuous process throughout the year. You're welcome.
Can I just state something on this? For those councilmembers who may be interested in seeing one of these, what one of these look like. If you ever go to Bancroft Park in Old Colorado City, they have them installed there. They're pretty, that's the same company.
Yeah, same company.
They're pretty phenomenal, and they, they design around graffiti and.
Yep. And vandalism is the big one for us.
Keeping them clean, yeah.
I don't know, I never thought I'd be so excited over a bathroom, but I, I love the idea because I get a lot of moms and people that say they really wish, you know, you get a beautiful fall day and we shut the bathrooms down, or we get, you know, a nice spring day. I'm hoping we'll be able to extend the hours with this being heated and the self-cleaning and all that. Maybe we can, you know, have it a little bit.
Yep.
Open more hours because our parks, you know, get heavily used. And I'd love to, like I was talking about setting some of those IGSA dollars, you know, maybe this is something we start budgeting for doing bathrooms at the other parks, too. We have to watch it for a year or so and see if it's really gonna do what we want. But thank you so hard for working hard on that grant to, to get that, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, are there any questions up here from anybody else? Any questions from anybody in the audience? We should have this in by the end of the year, right?
Oh, absolutely. We have to for the CDOT grant. I have received an email. The revitalizing Main Street grant is going away in 2026. So once we, if, if, if you do vote to agree to sign the sales contract, it's 14 weeks for the construction of the restrooms. After we shut down the splash pad, two weeks later, we'll have demolition on the existing restrooms. And then after that, as, as soon as they can get us the restrooms, we'll be putting them in. Looking mid-October right now.
Are we working with our ADA coordinator to improve the ADA parking over there by the restroom?
Yes, yes. Me and Rosa have been working on that.
Okay, yeah, because I, as I walk at that park and I walk by the restrooms, it just drives me nuts when I look at the slashes for the van and you, the cement thing in front of it. And I'm like, how in the world are they supposed to get to, yeah. So we're gonna improve that and bring it up to standards at the same time.
Yes.
Perfect, okay, great. All righty. Okay, any other questions? I know, when the fence.
If the weather will hold off, they'll get open.
All right, what would council like to do with Resolution 25-029? Councilmember Rick.
Move to approve Resolution 25-029.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Gordy, can I have you come back up just for a second?
Seven yes, motion carry.
Okay. I know this isn't on our agenda, but when, we had an issue with the splash pad a couple of weeks ago. Where you just shut the splash pad down for at least 24 hours.
Yes.
Because someone didn't put a diaper, the correct kind of diaper on their kid, essentially. Can, can you, accidents happen, right?
Right.
But can you explain to us kind of what the process is when that shuts down and all the work we have to go do, and how long it takes, and why it's shut down for that amount of time?
Yeah, so the tank, the splash pad, when it's full of water, the tanks and all the pipes and everything, it's 40,000 gallons of water. So the water pumps through there, I believe it's like 125 gallons per minute. And so all that water cycles through there constantly. And as it's cycling, it's getting treated by chlorine, it's getting treated by acid to kill any harm. to kill any harmful bacteria in there. So when somebody has an accident like that, it's harder for us to actually detect and see. So the Colorado Department of Health, along with the Certified Pool Operator Course for America, that myself and four other staff members attended, depending on the type of accident, and that was a severe accident, I don't want to be rude in here, we have to close down the splash pad, remove all traces of the feces. Then once we do that, we have to drain the water back out into the sewer system, and then we have to get into those tanks with a vacuum hose, vacuum out any remaining water in that tank. Then we have to pressure washer it with chemicals to desanitize the tank itself. Then after that, we got to turn it back on and run the chemicals through it for a minimum of 24 hours until our pH and our clean chlorine levels get back to acceptable.
Okay, so wearing appropriate clothing. Your child's not feeling well. It's a really, really big deal because it affects the whole community when the splash pad's down.
Yeah.
If we can just, people can help get that message out there, that would really be appreciated.
Yes.
So, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All righty. That takes us on to Item D, Fountain Urban Renewal Authority, A Recommended Area Modification to the US 85 URA and Establish at East Infill Number Six URA Designation Within the City of Fountain. Ms. Bailey.
Evening, Mayor. Council Public. Kimberly Bailey, Executive Director of the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority. Tonight, I'm with you to start the first step of engaging under state statute, a recommending action of establishing a new urban renewal area through an exemption, a modification, and establishment of a to-be-known East Infill Number Six URA within the City of Fountain. Overall, the East Urban Renewal Infill URA is pretty much identified within the black boundary area. The challenge that we are addressing is that the purple area identified here is actually existing within the existing 2008 URA master plan. For reference, under state statute, each individual URA starts a 25-year clock at the point of establishment, okay? So this purple area is coming up to an expiration period. And then also, the green or lime area is considered the Duckwood Extension Area, and it has not been at all included in any urban renewal designation plan to date. With the uncoming development in this area, as I believe your city planner identified today in her standard report, we're hitting a pivot point with the Mesa Ridge Parkway under CDOT access regulations. So with that said, we are recommending, in the notification-only process this evening, that we exempt the purple area, which basically comprises of about 80 acres, as well as include in the green area of adjacent 140 acres into a new urban renewal designation known as East Infill. If you can imagine looking down at the City of Fountain, the infill area was established by city's economic development about six years ago because at an aerial look, this entire area across the street from Mesa Ridge High School is basically a donut hole. Everything is developed around this hole, and this vacant land has been undeveloped for centuries. It's been agricultural land, you know, through the evolution of development in our community. So the proceedings basically are identifying the purpose is to provide enhanced transportation improvements that are necessitated per CDOT along the Mesa Ridge Parkway, which is a CDOT highway, want to clarify that, to ensure public pedestrian safety across that corridor, but as well as provide better enhanced dispersion traffic avenues to access and open up this landmass for viability of commercial development. That is the purpose. The structure proposed is a 50-50 only sales tax share split of pledged revenues from those revenues that would generate within this new urban renewal district area. And then as well as the use tax would be co-associated through that assignment of pledged revenues. There is zero property tax involved, so we do not have to do an impact study per state statute, and we only need to notify the county subsequently as we are notifying the city this evening through this proceedings. This process, just referencing that urban renewal is exempt from the implications or conformity under Tabor. So we are Tabor exempt as an urban renewal designation area. I think that is the highlights. It's really hard to see from this side. Oh, I did want to clarify something as well. So the purple areas that are outside the black boundary still stay within the US 85-87 URA established as of 2008. There are reasons why. The first phase in this area, which we call the pork chop, because that's what it represents basically from a shape model, this has already tax-sharing agreements through developers and/or the city and the urban renewal authority. Phase two, which was announced tonight, the grocer is opening next week, which is awesome, in addition to the tandem project, which was the UC Health Facility through that development agreement, that also has tax-sharing agreement obligations already under that 2008 URA. So that is why we are carving out the new virgin land areas to be developed, as well as capturing the southern tail of the Duckwood Corridor. The improvements that are being designed were basically, I call it an extra sketch, it's an engineer plan, through Wilson &amp; Co. under the City of Fountain's transportation affiliate agreement and CDOT coordination, because this is their state highway. And they are sharing with us that to allow further commercial development, necessitated public and transportation improvements must occur. So this is basically the designed engineering model. As you can see, Mesa Ridge Parkway is here, you have Mesa Road, which is to the south, and then you have Duckwood Road. The roundabout is at the very base and would snake up and connect to that corridor through the transportation improvements. The right-in, right-out would only be allow on both the westbound and eastbound lanes of Mesa Ridge. This bridge overpass would also consist of a vehicular but also pedestrian footbridge corridor in that area to allow better enhanced public safety and to hopefully mitigate and disperse the congestion we see daily on Mesa Ridge Parkway. This would allow for access through Mesa Road, as well as down here at the roundabout coming up. This corridor also allows for an easement right-of-way designation for the utility because the extension of a utility mainline needs to be addressed at the same time to address the future commercial development in this area. Now, 100% of these improvements will be covered through the development and improvement and revenue costs of this new commercial area. So I just want to be clear that the revenues are offsetting the improvement of costs. But to preserve those new revenues, they must be Tabor exempt, and this is the avenue to provide that through establishing a new East Infill URA designation area, is the recommendation. The timing of these improvements is really based on CDOT and the construction development there of density in this area. So in general, this is basically the shape of a new URA designation area that is being recommended this evening. Again, this is a non-action item. This is only information only this evening. Glad to address any questions that anybody may have as well at this time. But this is the litany of proceedings that shall transpire under state statutes as required. We already have two consultants, RFPs, received in regards to how they can meet our timeline, as well as the cost for doing those studies as well. Those are under review by the authority currently. So here's our first pivot point, which is tonight, recommending and disclosing this informational item. And in increments of about 30-day cycle, we shall proceed hopefully through a culmination of execution by the end of 2025, is basically the forecasted timeline. That is my information to share tonight. Glad to address questions or any further commentary.
Any questions from anybody on council? Can you, I'm sorry? Oh, can you back up to the slide where it's kind of like, the one before that, I believe? Nope, before that one.
Hmm, that's my cover page.
There was like a map that didn't have the colors on it. It was just black and white.
Hmm, I don't have a black and white map. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Hang on. Okay.
I mean, I have the schematic of engineering.
I don't know. Okay, go back to the next one. I guess I'm a little, so, okay, that's fine. Well, I'll work off that one.
Okay.
I'm just curious, because when we developed the pork chop piece. There was some agreements with utilities. And they got, whoever was in first kind of got, had to pay the brunt, and then the other, as other people lower in the process came along, they would be repaying the utilities that were put in by the first person. And I'm just curious if we're making a separate urban renewal authority out of that, how those agreements keep working? And Scott's looking at me like he has no idea what I'm saying.
I think you're, I think you're referring to sort of this donut hole thing. One of the things we've talked about is the development that needed to occur, and that at future, at a future point, we'd be coming in with some incentives to basically pay for those utility costs internally. But I think the very first URA projects included the improvements that needed to happen to get like electric there.
Correct.
Didn't that include the electric? Is that what you're referring to, Mayor?
Yeah. And so I'm just wondering if we're breaking, now we're breaking up a new urban, does that have any effect on those utility agreements from before?
No.
Yeah. Those are good. This one is primarily for the transportation piece because that transportation is so expensive.
I just want to make sure that we weren't...
Yeah, no, good question, yeah.
Correct. Well, the one thing I will say for utilities is that the pork chop was actually served from the US 85 mainline of electric, okay? The water runs along Mesa Road. And so we were able to kind of Band-Aid the utility service corridor for the first initial pork chop development area. The gas line runs along Mesa Ridge Parkway, and urban renewal actually supported the development to support rebates back to the developer to extend that gas line so we could support that cost of build-out for utility. I will definitely mention, Phase Three requires the spine to be extended from the Duckwood substation up through the new Duckwood right-of-way to support the larger density of development for Phase Three. So that will be necessitated as part of build-out on the developer's portion.
Okay, as long as the developer's paying for it. And then water?
Yeah. Water is accessible, yes, and water has been somewhat identified as plausible to serve the development area for the purple zone.
The purple zone?
Yes, the purple phase, the Phase Three up here. Duckwood is kind of out there in the development forecasting timeline of that 25-year cycle, but right now, as your planning manager advised you tonight, there are significant inquiries seeking development in Phase Three.
Okay.
And as we, as we look at the amount of connections, really the water resources that we currently have, we have them for that northern piece. The southern piece, there's no immediate development plans on the horizon. They will have to come at some point with the water.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, and I will just say, the 140 acres reduces to about 29 acres based on commercial spine of that new corridor. So there is future needs that need to be identified in those larger plots of land.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you. All right, thank you, Kimberly.
Okay, thank you so much for your time tonight.
It's just information.
Correct.
All right, now, Item 9E, Reorganization of the City Organizational Structure to Eliminate Administrative Services Department and Establish the Strategic Partnership Department. Mr. Trainer.
Thank you. Do I have the clicker for that, or do you want me, Bezi, do you want me just to? Is it working? It wasn't working for Shawna, okay. So first of all, actually, before I get into this, I want to pass on just a note from Ben. He followed up with fountain sanitation. He, on the project out here that was asked earlier, he indicated it was supposed to be completed tomorrow, but with the, this is directly from fountain, but with the rain, it will likely take a few more days, so.
Okay, we're getting close. Thank you.
But I just wanted to follow up with you.
Tell him thank you for that follow-up.
I did. Okay, so there are very few, and I know we have a very huge audience here. Steve, good to have you. But I also know that part of what I'm saying is also for those watching, but those who may watch in the future, I just want to get it on record, but there are very few opportunities that we as a city have in general to make revenues, to earn revenues off of anyone other than our own citizens. Our intergovernmental support agreements that we have with the military is one of those few opportunities that we have. And so as you can see from this, let's see, where's the little light? Oh, yeah. As you can see from this curve, you can see when we started our ICSAs, I'm just going to shorten it to ICSAs, intergovernmental support agreements with Fort Carson. By the way, those who aren't aware of what that is, that is essentially an intergovernmental agreement that we have with Fort Carson or any military installation to provide a service, to build something, anything along those lines. They can contract with the city to do that. And then we receive a revenue off the top of that as well for our, for our costs. You can see when we started that, started very small, 2021, very minimal. I think we started, the very first ICSA was for pest control. And just, it was a way for us, it was a new thing for Fort Carson, a new thing for us, was a way for us to sort of dip our toes in the water, learn about it, and start to sort of build our experience and build our muscle around how do we do these things? Well, you can see that this has grown exponentially. The projects that you can see are now growing exponentially. You can see in 2025 what's going on as far as revenues. Tonight, the city council just approved the authority to go up to $10 million in ICSAs. And I want to make sure I explain this clearly, that what happens is a, Fort Carson will come to the city and they'll say, we have this project, Project X. We estimate it's going to cost this much. We review that, we send it to the contractors that we have, they submit a cost, we then submit that. And I'm giving you a really simplified version of this. I know Bree, by the way, Bree Dixon is our administrator over these. But we give that back to them with a cost, they review it, they approve it, they give us the authority to go ahead with whatever the service or project is, and then we move forward. We then submit, excuse me, we make sure that contractors are paid, and then we submit for reimbursement from Fort Carson. So that's sort of the overall process, and that has been growing exponentially. We didn't think we were going to be hitting $10 million for years to come. And here we are to the point now where, as we just announced a little bit earlier tonight, Fort Carson, Big Army, approved us moving forward with the transit ICSA, which they want a micro-transit program on post. Now that's been bumped back down to Fort Carson with the authority for them to move forward with doing the work they need to do. And again, I'm probably oversimplifying that, too, but I just wanted to make sure that we all know that that's the process we're moving on. All right. I'm going to bump to the next slide here. You can see on here, this is a little bit more data about various projects. We have a little over $7 million in general facility construction to value the services, $220,000 for pest control, animal control about $150,000, transit right about $3 million. So you could see, even when we developed this, we were hoping that the transit would happen, but not sure. So you could see with transit, a little over $10 million, without transit, a little over $7 million. This next column shows, well, what kind of revenues does that actually bring into the city? I would say just on average, we make a little bit less than about 10% overall on our contracts with Fort Carson that then the city uses to pay for our costs and really to bring money in for our citizens. That's the beauty of these ICSAs, is that it pays for the cost of managing it. So you can see down here, I'm showing you again on this third column, your estimated FTE costs, our costs for managing those ICSAs, about $250,000. And that means your net total for that total amount is about $710,000 with, now that we're including the transit in there. That $710,000 are dollars that aren't restricted for the city in the sense that you as a city council or future city councils can take that and use that for anything that the council desires to do. Parks, trails, you name it. The only thing I would make a really strong recommendation against is spending it on ongoing personnel and operational costs, just because, you know, with the way the federal government works, right now, ICSAs are a big thing because it actually saves them money. It's a huge thing because it creates some resiliency for them. If a base realignment and closure process ever happens again, BRAC, if BRAC occurs, these ICSAs are very important in helping solidify them because that's a relationship with the local communities. It helps save them money, and on top of the money that it saves... It helps save them money, and on top of the money that it saves them, it also saves them a huge amount of time. One of the biggest complaints from Fort Carson is under the old process, how long, how long their processes take significantly faster. So, we don't think it's going away, in fact, we think it actually really meshes well with the new administration, what they're trying to do. But you never know. So, five years from now, 10 years from now, they decide, "Well, we're no longer going to do these." You just don't want to have to then lay off police officers and firefighters that you counted on. So that's just for whatever that's worth. Okay, so as we look at this, I'm going to go back for a minute. Maybe I'm going to go back. Maybe I'm not going to go back, okay. Okay, Bezzy, I'm going to put you in charge of that, because this controller's kind of a little bit iffy right now. You can see the way that's growing, and what I would tell you is this, this is an opportunity for the city. Currently, those numbers you're looking at right there are strictly for Fort Carson. We believe that there are opportunities to tap into the Air Force, Space Force, virtually any installation in our immediate vicinity are sort of the, the, the lower hanging fruit, right? We think that over time, this thing is going to really explode. But there's nothing that stops us from going to Aurora, from going down to Trinidad, and frankly, from going to other states that have the same need. Because what, what we find is, most cities that have IGZAs are fairly large cities. They have the capacity and the know-how and the people to do these. Most small cities like ours don't. And so it's a very rare thing for a city of our size to have the capacity to do this, and the capabilities, and we're very unique. And so, that again is an opportunity, because that brings in revenues for our citizens that they're not having to pay either in rates, or taxes, or whatever. So I want you to keep that in mind, just that that is a huge potential for us. It's potential that, when I started thinking this through, I, I was thinking it's going to be a few years down the road before it got to the point where it is now, and now it's looking a lot sooner. So, all that to be, all that really is going towards this idea of creating and really spinning off a department that is strictly focused on that. Because right now, what we have is administrative services that oversees our IGZAs. And in addition to that, they're overseeing finance, and HR, and communications, and just a whole plethora of things. And specifically John Trilch, who you all know, wears a bunch of different hats as he, as he works to do all those kind of things. Well, in order for us to really be successful, we, we have projected, and when this whole process started, that as we hit about 5 million in IGZAs, we were going to need a second Bree. And so, number one, I'm proposing that we hire a second, that we create a second position. She is a program administrator, right? That is on this slide right here. You'll see. Yeah, yeah, and I'll get to this, but my, my proposal is to basically eliminate Administrative Services Department, move finance, move HR, move communications back under the city manager, I'll just manage those. John Trilch would spin out, and we would spin off a new department called Strategic Partnerships. That Strategic Partnerships includes the things you can see here. It includes Bree is right here, the administrator, programs administrator, a new position right here, project coordinator. The, thank you, thank, Bezzy, I appreciate you doing that, because people online probably can't see my little laser pointer. The Transit IGZA Manager, that is one with transit, that's actually, it's paid through the transit program. So that $3 million for transit includes a Transit IGZA Manager. There's a little asterisk there, because we weren't sure if that was happening or not. And the IGZA Accountant. They actually need a separate accountant to track all the, all the dollars that are happening, everything that's happening with, under transit. He would also oversee an ongoing with military partnerships beyond just the IGZAs, right? There's a lot that happens. As you all know, he's on the National Council or, or Board, I don't know what they call it, Council Board for the ADC, the Association of Defense Communities, it's a big deal. But just any military partnerships we have, you know, we've used that in the past when we were dealing with PFAS issues. So, beyond just IGZAs, continuing to do our strategic planning, that's an area of exceptional expertise that John has, and we've seen that over the years. And then an area that he has a real passion for as well, so we're going to leave that in there, is emergency management. That's an area, again, that we're trying to get really re-energized and reinvigorated here. On the right side of that, you can see, the, this is the incremental increase. I'm not going to add a position there, but moving, changing his position will have an incremental increase, paid for through the IGZAs, of about, well, close to $15,000. The creation, well, the, this isn't a new cost, this is our existing overall FTE, fully burdened costs with, we're talking insurance, taxes, everything, for our current Programs Administrator. The Project Coordinator, this would be a new administrative position that we would create. Our current, for those of you who aren't aware, our current front desk person on the second floor is handling 14 different IGZA projects right now? About 14 different projects, and helping out with a whole bunch of things right there as well. We're just trying to make it work. And then you can see when we have to bring in a Transit IGZA Manager for on-post, they want to do micro-transit with that. That's part of the 1, 3-point, or excuse me, 2.9 million, the accountant, and then the, the various drivers. You can see down there in the very bottom, the Transit IGZA drivers, that'll be on-post as well. So, my ask of the city council is, under the charter, I have the authority to create new departments to reorganize. But I have to do that with the advice and consent of council. And so I'm bringing this before you for a couple reasons. Number one, to sort of tout the beauty that I see this IGZA program, because I really, and I know I get really excited and passionate about this, because again, there's not a lot of opportunities to make money for our residents, other than from our residents. So this is a great opportunity to do that for us. And I just see, I know I'm a little bit getting the cart before the horse when I talk about outside the region, or even outside the state. But I see so much potential for us to reach out with other small communities like ours, that have military bases, and help them do what we're doing, and take a part of that as well, take a, take a revenue stream from those as well in the future. And so as we, as we plan this, you got to be thinking forward, you got to be thinking a few steps ahead, so we can, we can be thinking about what that means. What that means is us creating this IGZA, this Office of Strategic Partnerships, and really sicking them on making this thing successful. Just as a, as a side note, a side-related note, we would probably move them out of City Hall, move them over to the second floor of, utility, yeah, thank you, customer service, I was looking for customer service. There's a second floor up there that's unoccupied, that would allow us to use some IGZA revenues as well to help pay the water fund for leasing that space. That's space that currently, right now, the water fund, which means our ratepayers are fully on the hook for paying for that building, whether it's, whether it's the debt service on it, or the maintenance, you know, heating, air, all that kind of stuff. And so this would allow us to take a piece of that at least and start, you know, getting some revenues coming in for the water fund as well. That's, it's a small piece, but it is a piece. You can see right here, you can see that it is now, just overall, a few notes we put in here. This is, tonight, we're hoping for authorization for the reorganization. The employee position specifically, changing John to the ACM, and creating a project coordinator position. And then authorization, which the council did earlier, to increase the IGZAs, the administration for the GFC up to 10 million. And then, the supplemental that Shawna also talked about, included some IGZA support in there as well. So, I'm throwing it out there, any questions that you might have for me, or thoughts?
Oh, can I have my screen back, because they're lighting up? And I don't know what, I know Fred, Fred was first, but beyond that, I'm lost. Okay, Councilmember Hinton.
So I'm probably going to steal Councilmember, um, Hirschberg's question. So, ACM, Assistant City Manager.
City Manager, yep.
Don't you have a deputy?
A deputy and assistant are really different.
They're different?
Yeah, the Deputy City Manager has line authority, it's, it's actually, that's a position that's created in our charter.
Okay.
And it really is, I, the best way I can explain it is it's really like a secondary city manager. They have line authority, they actually have authority to step in as the city manager when I'm out. That's actually in the charter as well.
Okay.
In fact, there's a really good, I could read this, because I think it's kind of a great way to sort of think of them. It's a, it's what we call a contingent authority position, contingent upon me really being gone, right? And has line authority over, over anyone under their chain, right? The Assistant City Manager is one that we, is really, provides technical administrative support to both the city manager and Deputy City Manager. So you'll see like, for example, large cities, and this is something that you don't see in a lot of small cities. It's something that as you start reaching, in fact, I've thought about this for years, but it's been along the lines of when we hit a population of maybe around 50,000, we'll do what cities like Greeley do, and they'll have a deputy, and then they'll have Assistant City Managers over. A lot of times they don't call them department heads, or directors, they'll call them Assistant City Managers. That's not what we're talking about here, we're really talking about someone who provides that administrative support, and is a functioning department head over just the Strategic Partnerships. Isn't a charter position, doesn't have that line authority, the delegated authority over anything else. Does that make sense, the, the little difference there, the nuance?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Assistant Manager would not be in line under the charter to take over and run the city. That would still go to City Manager, Deputy City Manager, City Clerk. So he would be in no way of that chain of command.
No, but one thing that we are finding is very important in our relationships with the military, is titles are really important. That's something that, never having been in the military, I don't think I have a appreciation for, the way that folks who have been in the military understand. And so part of the reason why we're doing that is also to create that title where they can look at it as the military, whether it's Fort Carson, Peterson, Shreve, or any of these, and go, "Oh yeah, okay, that's someone important," if that makes sense.
Councilmember Hirschberg, thank you for that question, because then I can ask my other ones, sorry. First of all, I just want to just comment about how, and you've heard me say this before, Scott, in other conversations, how innovative this is, this is powerfully innovative, and I just love everything about it. And I think John is pretty amazing. And when we're being such a good neighbor to Fort Carson, like you alluded to, it makes that relationship more sticky. And so really, I mean, that can't be understated. And what that Fort Carson means to our entire community, and the Fountain Valley, and the state. So that can't be understated. My questions are a little bit on the finance piece. So having your own accountant, so will that prevent co-mingling of the IGZA money from? I know it ultimately sort of ends up in the general fund, but will the accounting be in such a way that we can clearly delineate IGZA from everything else?
So the accountant themselves won't achieve that, but we believe, and this is something we'll come back to as we're going through the budget, we really want to create a, we really want to account for these separately in a separate fund.
Yes.
Right? Just so it's super clear on where we're costing everything, as well as what the revenues are coming in, and it doesn't get co-mingled. Now, you can still use those revenues, you would just pull them out of that fund to use them for whatever you want to use them for. The account, the way I look at that accountant is more of a bookkeeper, tracking all the very transit-specific things. The revenues coming in, the, the cost, the gas, the fuel, the, the people associated with that. That's something that Fort Carson wanted a separate body to help account for.
Well, and the dual control, I appreciate that, having two eyes working on, on that piece of it. And so to front the money we're talking about is probably going to require some sort of line of credit, I'm thinking, as opposed to it just coming out of?
That's a great question.
And would the interest cost be part of the bid?
That, are you talking about specifically Transit IGZA, or are you, just in general, when you're talking about those big numbers?
When we're talking about fronting and being reimbursed, there's a period of time where there's going to be interest expense.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. In fact, it's a question that, that Finance has evaluated with. The current cash flow we have right now, what is the payback period roughly? Do you know that?
I would say about two to four weeks.
Yeah, it's, it's less than a month, is what, when we're getting reimbursed back. But, beyond that, one of the bigger questions I had tied to your question there is, if we have $10 million in projects that we're paying contractors for, and paying transit employees, like, do we, can we cash flow that? And what, what happens is it's significantly less than that. We might have a churn of 2 million to 3 million, and we have, I want to say, I can't remember the exact number that Shawna said, but I want to say like 18 million that we have at any one time, that, that's fungible cash. I wish she was here so she could speak to that, because that's been a big conversation we've had internally. And the line of credit is the very thing we talked about, like, is that something we need to start exploring? We don't feel like we have to at this level, but I think as we expand, there is no doubt, we're going to, at some point, going to have to do something and include that, for sure. But, according to Finance, when we're talking about the numbers we are now, we're not to that point.
Okay, but ultimately, if there was an interest expense that would be charged as part of the bid?
Yeah.
And if there was a hiccup, because we are dealing with the government sometimes, and we didn't have timely payment, you know, you wouldn't necessarily want that kind of money
Yeah.
set aside from our general fund.
Right.
And then we would want to account for the costs.
Yep, you're right.
Okay, any other questions?
One more question, Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Hinton.
So, I know that we, I know the mayors discussed about kind of utilizing what that money is for, or what we could use that money for. And it's, it's my opinion that if we did like a survey to the, the people of Fountain, kind of give them five or six things, like, "Hey, what do you want to give back? What could we use that money for?" Because I believe that if it's tangible, that we could, we're showing our citizens that we're invested in them. I don't believe in like giving it to the utility company, that's just my opinion. I don't believe giving it back to a utility company, or doing anything, because that's not tangible to the, to the citizens, for myself. Parks, things that you can see with your eyes, I think is more appreciative to give back, utilizing those funds.
Okay.
I think it could be a combo, because reducing the debt utilities could ultimately reduce having to do a rate increase, and, and get out, get us out from under the burden of that. So instead of potentially doing, say, four years' worth of rate increases, we might only have to do three, or we might have to do the fourth, and it might be smaller. So, I know it's not as exciting, but I wanted, I would like to see a combination of both, with a very small percent, you know. But anyways, that's, that's why I threw it out there for a future agenda item discussion, on what we want to do with it, and the policy we want to, we want to set, yeah.
And Mayor, the other thing I would say is, sort of a benefit for Councilmembers, Councilmember Hirschberg's comment about this separate accounting. One of the benefits of creating that fund is it creates a very distinct conversation around, okay, what is that fund making, and what are we going to use those revenues on? It makes it just very crystal clear and transparent to everyone, what's happening. So hopefully, that'll actually help that conversation whenever, whenever we have that.
Right.
Other questions for me on operation of this, or how it might happen?
Mr. Ursi, any questions? Not tonight. Okay, all right. Wait, would you have one online?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you're online, please go ahead and state your name for the record and unmute.
Hello, Connie Wizenhent. Scott, I have a couple of questions, just for the clarity of people listening who may not be completely familiar with John's talent, and completely familiar with your good judgment in representing the city. But how did you come to the decision that John is to be placed in this position? And all of the other positions that are open, are they, or are they preoccupied? And, and how do we avoid that perception of the good old boy club?
Okay, great, great questions, Connie, thank you. So number one, right now, we have one person who has the expertise, who deals with IGZAs. John Trilch actually created the IGZA program. He worked with a consultant that we had at the time, we actually, a retired Air Force contracting officer that we brought on board, who, along with John, created our IGZAs. So, John is really the subject matter expert, and I don't want to say just in Fountain. I would tell you, he's the subject matter expert in the region, and I know that, because I've talked to other cities who have tried to pull him away. That's just a side note, for whatever it's worth. That's why he needs to be the one leading the charge in the IGZAs, if that makes sense. Does that, so, does that answer your first question, okay?
It does, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, you bet. So that one just was really clear. Now, the other positions, I don't know, can you pull up that slideshow? Because I want to, I want to go to that slide real quick. This one right here. Okay, when you look at this, like, Programs Administrator, that's an exist, if you look over on the far right, can you see that slide, Connie?
I can, thank you.
The one where it says Programs Administrator, that's an existing position, we already have, someone filled it. Project Coordinator is the new one that we're proposing, and no, we don't have anyone. And that will be a position that we will advertise for. It could be filled internally or externally. That's a, actually, that's a requirement that we have to do, anyway. And, and it's actually same for every other position you see below that. The Transit IGZA Manager, the IGZA Accountant, the IGZA Driver's Dispatch. Those are, those four different types of positions will all be, have to be advertised separately, and filled separately. And then I feel like there was a third question that I might have missed. Did I miss your third question, or did I get it?
No, it was just a general statement that we just want to get over this perception of the good old boy club, kind of in regards to our politics in our community, in our, in our city government. So, I just want to make sure that we're addressing that when given the opportunity to remain crystal clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, Councilmember Rick almost made it, huh?
This is for Connie. Connie, I would remind you that we have five women on the council, and only two men. So this is a good old women's network, good old girls' network, if you will, not a good old boys' network. So this is a good old women's network, good old girls' network, if you will, not a good old boys' network.
Good old women, good old women. Oh, man. Oh, you're in trouble now. Oh, my goodness, alrighty.
Thank you so much, Rick, for that clarification.
Okay. It was for a few years. I was the only woman on for a few years, so, yeah, I'm glad to see that switch, very excited. Okay, are we done with that? Any other last questions, or, we don't, you can't have the mic anymore, okay. Alrighty, that takes us on to item
We are not finished with that. Don't we have to vote on that?
I'm sorry, it didn't, okay. We have to vote on it, Scott, or?
Yes.
You just said you need a guide.
Advice and consent, and consent can be given through, it can be given through a vote. I mean, I just, if you're okay with it, I prefer a vote, just because it's really
Okay, I think I have one more question up here first.
Okay.
Oh, your mic's on. You're going to make the motion, okay. All right, go ahead.
I move to support the changes recommended by the city manager.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we, Councilmember Hersberg?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. No further discussion, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, that takes us on to City Council Agenda Requests. Are there any to my right tonight? Any to the left? Okay, I do have a City Council Agenda Request. I would like to see code enforcement do a presentation, and a little bit more than beyond their typical presentation. I would like to see them do something along the lines of how it works when code enforcement is called, from kind of both sides of the table, if someone were to call code enforcement on me, what my rights are, how it goes through the court system, or whatever, and also from the side of if I call code enforcement, what kind of responses I can request from them. I think it would be a really educational piece for the community to have, because I think people get a little frustrated when they call code enforcement and things don't happen immediately. And I think it would be good to lay out the process, and I'm thinking maybe a 10 or 15-minute presentation, maybe sometime in September, if possible. Yeah, kind of laying out the process for people, I think it would be good to understand it. Okay, and then, I'm trying to get a copy of the resolution that Thornton did, and it wouldn't be, it would just be supporting the other, I think it's up to six municipalities that are suing the state. We wouldn't enter into the lawsuit, but Thornton did a resolution just supporting those other six cities to uphold the home rule municipality law, and what our rights are as a home rule municipality that are being stepped on by the state. So I don't have a copy of the resolution yet, but I'd like to bring it back just to show it to council and have a discussion of possibly, you know, looking at that resolution, and sending one of support to those cities also. So I got a couple nods up here. Okay, it wouldn't cost us any money, right, just a little time. Okay, alrighty. And those are my two requests. And other than, oh, you have one now? Okay.
I would like to have a presentation from the chamber as to where they stand in the community, and what they do to help our small businesses.
Okay, I'm fine with that. They've gone through a lot of changes in the last year. I think it's a good update to get from them. Yeah, all right. All right, anything else? Okay, seeing none? Oh, we're going to go into executive session, don't we, Joanie? I'm trying to get us out of here.
In accordance with the City Charter and the Colorado Open Meetings Act, the City Council Open Session is to determine whether it will hold a closed executive session. Closed executive session may be held upon an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present. If consent to the closed executive session is not given, the items may be discussed in open session or withdrawn from consideration. The purpose of tonight's executive session is pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024 for the purpose of review, approval, and amendment of the executive session minutes. Pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024G for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter not involving, and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body, or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personnel, personal to particular employees for executive evaluation. Madam Mayor.
Okay, that's the motion from our city clerk. Councilmember Rick.
I would just ask, do we need to do this tonight? It's after nine, and this is going to take probably about an hour, so I'm just asking.
I think we need to do it tonight. Anybody else?
Sorry, are you asking me? I apologize.
I don't know, I'm not hearing any, I'm not hearing any heads shake.
Well, I know what we're doing, but we do need to take care of it. It's been delayed a couple times, so we just need, we need to knock it out.
Yeah. Okay, that was not a motion. So do we have a motion?
I move to go into executive session.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
I second that.
We have a third. That's okay. Are we voting?
I have Councilmember Estes as a first, and Councilmember Duncan as a second. Do you confirm?
Yes.
Okay.
And a third.
Okay, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, all righty, everybody. Joanie, five minutes? Okay.